Support outdoor learning. Visit Colorado State Parks and 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 su-
All right, let's get this show on the road here. Okay, good evening. This is a hybrid meeting of the City Council, member of the public, and computer this meeting live on Channel 8 and city's website and YouTube. Live Spanish translation services are being provided for tonight's council meeting by telephone. Please dial 720-386-9023 and use code 104091*.
Se ofrecen servicios de interpretación en español para esta reunión del Consejo Municipal por teléfono. Marque el número 720-386-9023 y utilice el código 104091*.
Okay, thank you. All votes on tonight's agenda will be conducted as a roll call vote. We'll now call the regular meeting to order and we'll now ask to, uh, I'm sorry. We'll now call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Mayor Douglas?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Present.
Councilmember Madeira? Councilmember Teeter?
Present.
Councilmember Chacon?
Present.
Councilmember Kim?
Here.
Councilmember Dukes?
Present.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Councilmember Douglas?
Here.
You have a quorum, mayor.
Thank you, I need a motion in a second to excuse members not present. Councilmember Dukes?
So moved.
Councilmember Ford?
Second.
Okay. Motion to floor to excuse members not present, I will ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes six to two. All right. Please join me for a moment of silence following pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do any councilmembers wish to agenda? I'm sorry, amend, amend the agenda, sorry. Where my head is.
We know what you're doing.
All right. I need a motion in a second to adopt the agenda as presented. Councilmember Kim?
So moved.
Councilmember Teeter?
Second.
Okay, motion to floor to adopt the agenda as presented. I will ask the clerk to take a roll call vote, please.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, it passes eight votes and one absence. Okay, on to public comments. All public comments except for those in public hearings will occur now. If you are intending to com- to, if you are intending to comment about tonight's public hearing tonight, on tonight's agenda, please refrain from, please refrain from doing so until the public comments for that particular, uh, item is heard. Public comments shall be limited to three minutes each. Persons registered speak for multiple items, may speak multiple times. Will the city clerk call in a virtual or in-person speaker, please?
Our virtual speaker is not on the Zoom, so we'll move on to those in person.
Thank you.
The first person is Brandy Valdez. If you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening.
Oh yeah, your speaker's not on, the mic, sorry. Mic's not on.
Okay, good evening, I'm Brandy Valdez. My address is 7550 Kearney Street, Commerce City, Colorado. I'm here tonight to ask city council for a big request. As some of you know, we have a boutique that we run, a clothing closet out of. And I'm here tonight to ask if you guys would be willing to sponsor us for $3,000. The $3,000 would go towards, well, $2,000 of it's gonna go towards diapers. So we partner with a group called WeCycle, and they provide us with diapers and wipes that we can hand out to the community. Last year, we handed out approximately $18,000 worth of diapers to people in our community in need. This year, the company has, because of the need getting so big, they have started assessing a fee now to be able to get these materials. And our portion of that fee, based off of our almost $18,000 that we did, is $2,000. The other $1,000 that we are requesting is gonna go towards helping us to provide food and hygiene for the community during, like, long breaks that kids have off from school. So it would go for getting, like, canned foods, perishables, and things like that. I think that is about it. So yeah, if you guys have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer, and, um, yeah.
Thank you. Councilmembers, Councilmember Douglas?
So, Brandy, I just want to, um, say that I totally support you. This will probably be something that will have to be brought up later on in the, the meeting in administrative council business, but, um, I want to commend you for doing such incredible work in this, uh, in this community. And I have been to the boutique, I know that you're, you're moving to a larger space because it's been so successful, but I just want to tell you how much you're appreciated and keep up the good work. Just, um, you've done such amazing work as, uh, the Chair of the DAC for Adams 14, which is district accountability. That's no walk in the park to organize all of that and run the meetings. So just keep doing what you're doing. It's amazing work, and I wanna thank you.
Thank you.
You have a councilmembers? Thank you, Brandy. I really, uh, no, wait, wait. I echo, I echo what Councilmember Douglas said, uh, cuz I see you in action, and I do appreciate that, and that there is an outpour of need in, in the community, and I know you want to serve as many people as you can, but you're limited. So thanks for coming in and putting that offer to us. So again, we'll, we'll take care of that if at administrative council business comes up. So thank you very much for being here.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, next we have Jackie Valdez. Jackie, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Um, the last time we were here at council, um, there was quite a few things that was brought up. Well, I'd like someone to refresh my memory. I sat out in the audience and I heard, um, it said that I was offered to get my property fixed for nothing, and that I was told about it. Well, I would like to know, at this point in time, who was the person that came out to my home, and who was the person that told me the day of court that, uh, I could get my property fixed for nothing? So Mr. Ford, can you answer that for me?
I'll sure do my best. Mr. Rogers, well, you know, what I was told was that Ms. Valdez was, um, offered by the police department to go through the program to be able to, uh, look into getting her fence repaired.
That is correct.
Really? And may I ask, who was, who was the one that told me this?
Deputy Chief Sada.
Really? Okay, um, when was this done?
This was done, I'd have to go back and look at the communication, ma'am, but this was done shortly after you had originally raised this matter to the council. We've also have had staff within our CDBG program also make multiple attempts in trying to assist you, ma'am.
Really? Wow, okay, well, I must really be having a mental lapse, because I can tell you one thing, I've never been addressed for anyone to help me with getting my fence fixed. The last time when the officer was out there, I had to beg for them to even ticket the young man, because they weren't even gonna ticket him. And when I went to court, what was told to me in court was I needed to go to Brighton, to Adams County, to even try to get any assistance, because they only have a cap of $2,500 in Commerce City. And it was above and beyond that to get it fixed. The only thing I've ever been told, as far as Commerce City, is to try to get either state or federal to help me out. I've never had Commerce City Police Department ever, ever. And I'd like to have a recording of that, of that conversation, because I'm having one heck of a mental lapse on this.
If I may, um, in speaking with that, in getting additional details for your awareness, yes, you're correct, there's a program in that program, is the victim compensation program.
Wow, and I did not know that, and was not informed of that, and they will fix my fence for nothing. Is that correct?
Ms. Valdez, could you, uh, I'm sorry, so I'll call you Councilmember Rogers. City Manager Rogers, could you get with Ms. Valdez and give her that information, if that's possible?
Yes, we'll have the appropriate staff reach out to her, ma'am.
Okay, appreciate that.
Well, thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Valdez.
Mayor, our next speaker is Keith Rogers. Keith, if you wanna come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Keith Rogers, and Mr. Douglas, I would thank you so kindly for working on this for us, so we can at least get one thing off our list. We still have the problem with the ATVs, the motorcycles. We need, we still need patrol in that area. I don't know why it's so hard to get somebody over there, at least during the daytime. You know, of course, the rattling of the trucks and tankers going across those tracks is getting ridiculous, but I appreciate you pushing on this to get something done for us, cuz we don't feel like anything else is being done. So I just wanted to thank you very much for doing that for us.
Appreciate that. And also want to extend the help from the city as well. They were pushing that as well with our TD. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Renee Bullock. Renee, if you'd like to come up, you'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Renee Bullock, 6130 Ivanhoe Street. I'm the Executive Director of the Commerce City Chamber of Commerce, and I'm here tonight for two reasons. One is to save the date. The saved the date is for May 3rd, 2025, the fastest two minutes in horse racing. It's our Derby in the Derby that we have at Key Bank in Derby, Colorado. We're the only derby we have here that has a derby. And so I would like to invite our partners to please show up for this event, and because you are our senior partner in the city, we would like to ask you for your partnership again this year for a $2,500 donation, as you've done in the past, uh, to help our event along. I'm going to leave these with the city manager's office, and she can get copies to everyone that shows the different partnership levels, but I would really love to have you all come out, wear your best derby gear, and have a good time on that day. And let me tell you, you can win prizes too. Last year, we had two, um, Lotto boards. We started with a hundred dollar ticket in fifties and twenties and went down. And Councilmember Rocky Teeter won both of them. Then when the drawing was done, he, I know he's a millionaire now, but he doesn't wanna tell anybody anything about this, it's between him and the IRS. That's my, uh, first ask. My second ask comes from a chamber members up in the northern part of the city. There's over seven daycare facilities in the northern part of the city, and there's a new one being built. Now, I've been approached by four or five of our daycare members that are asking, there aren't enough kids to go around for the seven that are up there. Why is there another one being built? And it's in the same proximity as four others. And so, um, there, my ask from them to you is, can you explain to them why there is a new daycare facility being built when there aren't enough children going around for the other seven or eight that are up there? I, I don't expect an answer now.
Okay, well, I was gonna say, I appreciate you asking that question.
But I would like for you to think about it, and you go up and investigate it, and see if there's a need for an eighth daycare center in the same vicinity where there is seven others. That's my ask for the day, and please, when you get to council administrative business, remember the fastest two minutes in horse racing. Thank you.
Thank you, Renee, appreciate.
Mayor, our last speaker is Ryan Kiefer. Ryan, if you wanna come up, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, uh, thanks for listening this evening. I have some concerns, and I really hope to get some answers this evening from you all. I believe it was about a month ago, I came here, and we had to vote on metro districts being reinstated in the state, in the city. I went through, and I listed very vividly what the reasons were, were that the, the plan we had in place wasn't gonna work. And then I went through and emotionally tried to ask you why not, why we shouldn't do this. And I knew the vote was gonna go five to four, and it's exactly what it went. It was really frustrating, and I thought about this quite a bit. Mr. Dukes, you went ahead, and you've said in the past that the loudest voice isn't always the one that is the people's choice. I, I didn't hear a single person, there was a citizen come up here and say, ma'am, we really want this back. What I did hear is developers come up here, and one after another, they all said that we want it. So there was a big difference between the citizens who you're supposed to represent speaking, and the developers all speaking. I don't know if it's the loudest voice, but it sure, sure seems to be the richest voice, gets to be the one that heard the most, and it's very frustrating. It feels like a charade at this point, to some degree, when we come up, up here and talk to you guys and ask for things, because it just goes through, and no matter what we say, you're gonna vote the way you vote. I'm, I'm beyond frustrated, and I would love to know why it is that votes go through like this when we come up here, we try to speak to you. It's not easy for everyone to come in here. I just got off work, had to come here, didn't have a lot of time, and again, Mr. Dukes is even looking at me, which I'm not surprised. So I would, I just want an answer why it is that we don't get heard, and if you don't speak to me, that's fine, I get it, but it is what it is. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for coming in. City Manager Rogers, did you, or is that from before?
It was from before, ma'am, just for a point of clarification, the Derby Day's request is already on your agenda for March 17th.
Oh, March 17th, okay, thank you. Mr. Bullock, did you hear that?
Yes, I did.
Okay, thank you. All right. Is that it? All right, thank you. Okay, that was wraps that up. Let's see here. Okay, members of the public were able to submit written comments online by mail. Written comments were received by the deadline and incorporated into the updated agenda packet. If any follow-ups necessary, you should be, expect to be contacted by a staff member. I know it's before the time, can we go to, can we recess to Urban Renewal Authority, or should we wait till 6:30?
You can recess now to the URA.
Okay, all right. Okay, we'll recess to Commerce City Urban Renewal Authority meeting. The city council meeting will reconvene immediately following the Urban Renewal Authority meeting. I call the Urban, Urban Renewal, sorry, call the URA meeting to order.
I'm grateful to these hyphenated heroes.
All right, well, now call the, we need to order and ask the secretary to take a roll call vote, please.
Chair Douglas?
Present.
Vice Chair Noble?
Yes.
Present.
Commissioner Amador?
Present.
Commissioner Teeter?
Present.
Commissioner Chacon?
Present.
Commissioner Kim?
Here.
Commissioner Dukes?
Here.
Commissioner Ford?
Here.
Commissioner Douglas?
Here.
Commissioner Machuga?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. All right. I need a motion in a second to excuse the members not present? We didn't have a member from Adams County, correct?
No.
No, sir.
No, okay, thank you. Councilmember Ford?
So moved.
Okay, second, Councilmember Dukes?
Second.
Thank you. Can the motion of force to excuse the members not present? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, motion passes, let's see, who we got here?
That'd be ten to one, mayor.
Ten to one, okay.
Or ten with one excused absence, yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Okay, approve of the minutes, they need a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Councilmember Dukes? Councilmember Teeter?
Second.
Motion to floor is to approve the minutes, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, that passes ten with one excused absence. All right, on to resolution. Resolution, URA 2025-DAD001, dedication of rideaway to CDOT. We'll invite Terry Ware, Director of Urban Renewal, to give the presentation.
Thank you, sir. Members of the Urban Renewal Authority, thank you for your attendance this evening. The item before you is fairly straightforward. It's dedication of rideaway pedestrian utility easement and drainage easement. Although the project itself is fairly straightforward, there are a number of actions that are required to implement this particular project, so I'll go through those as well as provide some background. So there are three actions, essentially, dedicating a drainage, utility, pedestrian, and street amenities easement, drainage easement, and rideaway by special warranty deed to the city. Dedicating a temporary construction easement to the Colorado Department of Transportation to carry out the actual construction. And amending a loan agreement between the Urban Renewal Authority and Commerce City, reducing the loan amount by the value of the easement, which is valued at approximately $1.6 million. Bit of history, uh, city and CDOT entered into an intergovernmental agreement back in 2021 that detailed, uh, cooperation for the design and construction of improvements along Vasquez Boulevard between I-270 and 64th Avenue, so Highway 2, as it's more commonly referred to. The project is in the final stages of design and construction, and anticipated to begin soon, hopefully this year and sometime this summer or spring. The project cannot commence until the, the next actions are taken place, which are the dedication of the rideaway easements maintenance agreement, uh, from the Urban Renewal Authority to either CDOT or to the city. So approximately 17,000 square feet of rideaway, 8,600 square feet of permanent easement, 5,400 square feet of easement for utilities and drainage infrastructure, 74 square feet of temporary easement for the construction itself, and a future agreement to utilize the Mile High Greyhound Park Track B Stormwater Pond. That particular issue, the last one, uh, has not been covered in the materials that you receive, because there's ongoing discussion about, uh, construction on Track B and its impact, but that will come forward in the near future. As I mentioned, the budgeting value by CDOT's estimate is estimated to be $1.6 million. That's the value of the rideaway and easements. Transportation project is designed to improve both traffic flow around Mile High Greyhound Park, as well as provide benefits to the larger community in terms of vehicular movement and pedestrian safety. Project is able to absorb the acquisition of the property without value engineering or other improvements. And as of March 25th, 2023, the Urban Renewal Authority, uh, directed staff to move forward with the dedicating, dedication, rather, of the rideaway easements and permanent access to detention facilities. So here's a map indicating the project location. Vasquez Boulevard, as you see, is in the center of the slide. Mile High Greyhound Park, uh, is the slightly brown area in the upper right-hand corner, and so the improvements will occur along the northern portion of Vasquez Boulevard, Colorado Highway 2, as well as along 62nd Avenue from Colorado 2, approximately to Glencoe. Here's a larger blow-up of that, indicating the specific improvements. Traffic signal at Vasquez and East 62nd Avenue, multimodal sidewalk improvements by that, available for bike traffic as well, street lights and a fire hydrant. Identified here in blue, uh, slightly larger map indicating the specific improvements that are proposed, and in the middle, you see the drainage facility that I referred to earlier. As I said, there's still ongoing discussions about development on Track 2, or Track B, rather, so we'll come back to you with that specific issue. A map identifying in various colors the rideaway, which is in green, the drainage utility and pedestrian and street improvements amenity easement, which is in the brown, the drainage easement itself, which is in blue, and then the temporary construction easement, which is indicated in yellow. Uh, this is a graphic from the proposed development located on Track B, indicating the various pad sites, uh, that are proposed for that development, and those projects will come forward, uh, two year in the future. So, uh, in conclusion, the various elements that we're asking the URA board to take are three, dedicating to drainage, utility and pedestrian, and street amenities easement, drainage easement, and rideaway by special warranty deed to the city. Dedicating a temporary construction easement to the Colorado Department of Transportation. And amending a loan agreement- construction easement to the Colorado Department of Transportation, and amending a loan agreement between the Urban Renewal Authority and the city, reducing the loan amount by the value of the easement, which is $1.6 million. I believe in the staff communication and resolution that you have before you, it indicates the specific of that particular action and that the outstanding value right now is $13,159,590 approximately, and so that would be reduced by 1.6 million. And then lastly, City Council action to agree to amend the loan agreement between the URA and the city, reducing the loan amount by that value of $1.6 million. That concludes the presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Ware. Any commissioners have questions for staff? See, now I have a question. Looking at that drainage, it looks like it's going to be part of the parking lot, is that correct?
That's generally correct. There's some discussion whether it could be a surface drainage area or an underground surface area. The dynamics of development on that side are still under discussion, that's one reason why.
Okay, so if this is developed and then you have the subterranean drainage, so everything will flow correctly?
Into that site.
Into that, okay, all right. That would be nice to have a drainage that's usable instead of something that is a
Just a hole.
Whole mosquitoes and all that, so.
Agreed.
I appreciate that.
Sure.
Thank you. I need a motion in a second to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero one. Commissioner Noble.
So moved.
Commissioner Teeter.
Second.
Commissioner Dukes, you have a question?
Oh, no.
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Okay, motion of floors to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero one, all those in favor say aye. Commissioner Chuga?
Aye, aye, I accept.
Thank you. All right, that's ten. Ten yeses and one, one excused absence. All right, on to resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero two, third amendment to IGA loan. Is there a presentation to this or explanation on the third, third amendment to IGA?
I can provide some additional information beyond what you've heard up to this point if there are questions.
Yes, I could, yeah, if you could do a brief explanation, that'd be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm in a, excuse me, one moment. So there was a previous agreement and meeting that occurred back in 2023, certainly before I was here, but at that meeting, the discussion occurred that outlined the need for construction of this particular easement and improvements to the rideaway. Apparently during that meeting, there was an agreement that was reached between the URA Authority and City Council that discussed how the project had moved forward, and as I understand it from the information that I've been provided, the question of value of the property came about, and so there were numerous discussions that occurred about what the value should be, that value is based upon the appraised value that CDOT undertook. Part of that discussion, as I understand it, then talked about deduction of the loan value. I don't know if City Manager or City Attorney have any additional information to provide, but from what I have, that's my understanding.
City Manager Rogers?
Yes, thank you for that, Mr. Ware. I would say the conversation in which you raised is accurate, it was obviously before this seated council before you and that that conversation was held within a protected discussion. So I think you're generally given, I think, high level takeaways based on that and how we are now here before you based on those discussions.
I think Caitlin Quander, Counsel to the URA, may have additional information.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Caitlin Quander, Legal Counsel to the URA, Special Counsel. Just to clarify one point, so this resolution relates to the $1.6 million that was in Mr. Ware's original presentation. His presentation basically covers all three resolutions that you see this evening, so I just wanted to connect that dot, that the $1.6 million that he was talking about, this is the resolution that would approve that piece of that.
Okay.
Thanks.
Appreciate that, thank you. All right, any other questions for staff? Okay, I need a motion in a second to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero two. Council, Commissioner Dukes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero two.
Thank you, Commissioner Noble.
I'll second that.
Okay, all right, the motion, all right, dash, is there any other discussion? Okay, motion of floors to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero two, all those in favor say aye. Commissioner Chuga?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, that's ten and one excused absence, thank you. Okay, sorry, that motion passes ten. Next one, resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero three, approval of temporary construction, are there any questions for staff? Councilmember Teeter, I mean Commissioner Teeter?
I have. My button's not pushed, is it?
Thank you, all right. Any questions for staff? None, okay. Need a motion in a second to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero three. Commissioner Ford.
So moved.
Commissioner Teeter.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? See, none. Motion of floors to adopt resolution, URA 2025 dash zero zero three, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
In online? Thank you. Commissioner Chacon?
Sorry, I thought my thumb was aye.
I didn't see it, sorry about that, thank you. Okay, that motion passes with ten yeses and one excused absence. All right, that takes care of the URA business, thank you very much for attending. We'll adjourn to the City Council regular meeting, the time is 6:35.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll reconvene the City Council meeting. Can we start early?
Yes, sir.
All right, appreciate that. Okay, all two proclamations, a proclamation declaring climate emergency. We'll invite Councilmember Chacon to read their proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas global warming has now raised the average global air temperature above one degree Celsius, and scientists have documented that this extra heat already dramatically impacts the environment, larger and stronger hurricanes, increased drought and flooding, shifting rain patterns, more and larger wildfires, a hotter and more acidic ocean, and damaged ecosystems, both marine and terrestrial across the planet, and whereas in April 2016, world leaders recognized the urgent need to combat climate change by signing the Paris Agreement, agreeing to keep global warming well below two degrees Celsius, 3.6 degrees Fahrenheit, above pre-industrial levels, and to pursue efforts to limit the temperature increase to 1.5 Celsius, 2.7 degrees Fahrenheit, and whereas in 2017, over 15,000 scientists published a warning to humanity, declaring that greenhouse gases produced from human activities has pushed Earth's ecosystems to their breaking point, and whereas 14,859 scientists from 158 countries have signed a declaration unequivocally affirming that Planet Earth is facing a climate emergency and will now take an immense increase of scale of endeavors to conserve our biosphere to avoid untold suffering, and whereas based upon the scientific information and expertise available, Colorado is in danger of disaster occurrences as a result of the effects of global warming, thereby endangering the health, safety and welfare of the people, warranting preemptive and protective action. Now therefore be resolved that Commerce City Council, the City of Commerce City hereby declares an existential climate emergency threatens humanity and the natural world, declares a climate emergency and supports worldwide collaboration towards an immediate just transition and emergency mobilization efforts to restore a safe climate, and that the city encourages statewide action that is committed to and rooted in equity, self-determination, culture, tradition, and the belief that people locally and around the world have the right to clean, healthy, and adequate air, water, land, food, education and shelter, and finally that nothing in this measure constitutes a declaration of an emergency for purposes of any act authorizing the exercise of any special or extraordinary power during the period of a state of emergency or other type of declared emergency.
Thank you, Councilmember Chacon. I need a motion in a second to approve the proclamation. Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve this proclamation.
Mayor Probstem Noble?
I'll second it.
Okay, is there any discussion? Councilmember Teeter?
Yeah, I'll be voting no on this. On January the 10th, President Trump passed an executive order withdrawing from the Paris Agreement, and so it's basically this proclamation is null and void.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember, thank you. Councilmember Douglas?
Yes, thank you. I will be voting yes on this, and earlier today, I don't know if the rest of the council members received an email, and I did want to say that I acknowledged that email, and I thought about it, and because a constituent took the time to reach out and express their feelings and to share their point of view. However, I do see this as an emergency. We can deny what's happening all we want, or we can choose to ignore it, or we can call it that we need to address global warming, or we need to address climate change. I've never called it climate change because I believe that that is kind of a softening of what's actually really going on. I've always called it a climate crisis, and in this proclamation, it is called an emergency. And if we fail to address this, our environment will be unlivable for future generations. We keep, the temperature keeps rising and it's getting to the point where people can't work outside. During certain parts of the year, we have fires that start on Christmas Eve in a place that shouldn't be confronting fires that late in the winter season, and this is something that we have to acknowledge and address. Thank you so much.
Thank you, any other councilmembers? Mayor Probstem Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. I personally feel an obligation to the next generations. My niece is about to have a baby in two weeks and she's very scared. She's scared about what the future is going to look like for her daughter. I lost my home in a wildfire, and the conflagration that came through Pacific Palisades in Malibu was something I have never, ever, ever seen. Fire Nato's for sure, fires right now in North and South Carolina. We, of course, had the Marshall Fire. I was reading recently that there really is no safe place if you are a climate refugee or you're looking for a place to go. Minnesota has flooding, even though they have better temperatures, although you could freeze up there, that's for sure. I know this is a controversial issue, and I know that there is a new administration that has a different view than I do, but given the nature of Commerce City and the kind of industry that is in Commerce City that could in many ways be contributing to these issues, I will be voting yes, which is why I seconded the motion on behalf of the children of Commerce City.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Thank you. Councilmember Chacon? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all. I just wanted to clarify why I brought this proclamation. One, the climate emergency is now we are actually in the sixth mass extinction for our whole entire planet, and at this point, it isn't whether we look at it politically as being part of the Paris Agreement, it's that we are all actually incredibly vulnerable to climate emergencies, and right now here in Commerce City, we are incredibly vulnerable to wildfires, and we do not have exit routes. We have a number of cumulative impacts, whether we're talking about railroads or transportation, that when you look at a wildfire, our community can be an incredibly lethal space because of so much oil and gas. I am concerned about the future generations, but I'm also concerned about the current generations as well and what we think we could deserve. So this proclamation isn't meant to be politicized or polarize our council, it is legitimately to make us responsible for our community in a way that if we don't act now, we're culpable for anything that can happen because we didn't take it serious. So I just wanted to clarify and I thank you all.
Thank you. Any other councilmembers? Yes, I agree, last night I was watching the news, looking at the weather, and they actually had fire danger in the southeast area of the state, not a county, the state. Wasn't that long ago on Christmas Eve, we had a fire that took a subdivision out, a fire in December. That means we're dry. Go up to the mountains and you see the trees and tree lines, some are really dry. We are lacking, you know, early on we had drought indicator that we are way ahead of the percentage and now we're behind. And so it's okay if local government takes a climate emergency and on this proclamation, political commitment is often the hardest part of addressing climate change. A motion of floors to approve the proclamation, we'll ask the city, sorry, ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
That passes six to two. Thank you. All right, notes council business, sponsorship Boys and Girls Club. I asked to bring this forward, a donation towards a Boys and Girls Gala. This event's going to be in May 3rd, and I'm asking for a $3,500 donation. I think the highest was sold out, but the second one, visionary sponsor was $35,000, diamond sponsor was $25,000, silent auction sponsor $15,000, silent disco sponsor $15,000, gold sponsor $12,500, silver sponsor $7,500. So I'm asking for the City Council to sponsor Boys and Girls Club at $3,500, because it'd be table for 10, and you can invite a guest if you'd like to participate, but that's a motion of floor is to sponsor the Boys and Girls Club Gala at $3,500. floor, is to sponsor the Boys and Girls Club Gala at $3,500. Councilmember Douglas?
I'd like to second that, please.
Councilmember Kim? Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you, Mayor. This sponsorship comes up every year, and every year, I want to ask this question, which is, this is for a gala that's held in downtown Denver, and what I'd like to know is how much of the $3,500 actually goes to the Suncor Boys and Girls Club in Commerce City? Because maybe it would be better, instead of going to a dinner, to actually give them the money, since this is for all of Boys and Girls Club in all of Colorado, as opposed to just Commerce City. At least, that's my impression. I could be wrong.
Okay.
Could you clarify that for me, please?
Sure. Well, I believe it does go to the Boys and Girls as a whole, as the Denver metropolitan area, not Boys and Girls Club through the nation. And also, as you participate in this, there's opportunity, they have paddle drawings and all that. Raise your hand if you want to donate any extra money. And there is a networking event beforehand, and so, pretty much, it's a celebration of what the kids accomplish for the year. I know in the past, we were invited to the Boys and Girls Club at Suncor, and they had a smaller gathering of community members and the kids that attend the Boys and Girls Club over at Suncor. So I'm not sure what has changed over the years, but this Boys and Girls Gala has been going on for quite some time. But thank you for asking.
Yes. So then, in that case, I would like to ask you to consider amending your motion to donate $2,500 directly to Suncor Boys and Girls Club rather than the event.
I would, I would say we should do that next year, and this year, if we can just keep this as it is, you bring up a very good point, and that way, we are ahead of the curb instead of behind.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Teeter?
I didn't quite understand. Did you say that it's, the youth club in Commerce City, is that solely funded by Suncor? And do they get any funds from Denver?
No, this is an organization, as far as Denver Metro Area Gala, it's all the Boys and Girls Club throughout the, throughout the metro Denver area. There's, I can't think how many Boys and Girls Club are. There's Denver, there's several throughout the metropolitan area, and we're just one of many.
Okay. I don't think I can support that. Sorry.
Mayor Pro Tem, were you a second on that? Or were you just asking questions?
No, I wasn't just saying.
Okay.
Councilmember Douglas was.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, I will ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to one. All right. Thank you. Onto NLC trip planning. I'll invite Michelle Frye, staff's assistant, to introduce this item. Thank you, Michelle.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and Council. As I explained earlier in the legislative committee meeting, you have before you the talking points for the advocacy meeting, as well as the agenda. Council was emailed, the entire council was emailed, the talking points as they stand today with various input from several council members, and I am requesting your vote.
All right. Need councilmembers to have questions. Sorry, I need a motion, I need a motion in a second to adopt the talking points for an NLC advocacy trip. Councilmember Dukes?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt.
Okay. Councilmember Douglas?
I'll second that.
All right. Is there any discussion? Okay. The motion on the floor is to adopt the talking points for NLC advocacy trip. I'll ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, vote is eight with one excused absence. All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving along here. Presentation, Oil and Gas Monthly Update. I will invite Libby Tartt, Senior Environmental Planner, forward to give the presentation. Good evening.
Good on you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Libby Tartt, and I'm here to present the oil and gas update for the month of March. Currently, there are no active Commerce City oil and gas applications, but we have been actively noticed several times over the, over the course of kind of late January through February, with various notices of move-in rig ups and mechanical work. Three of those move-in rig ups have occurred in Adams County, and one is located in Commerce City at what is called the TR Ranch, or the future tribute PUD that will, that the council will consider in the, in the near future. And, and so, we, and then we've received two notices of mechanical work, one occurring on TR Ranch, and then one in Adams County as well, on similar sites. We have been actively working with Chevron. They approached the city about replugging some older plugged and abandoned oil and gas well sites that are actually located in our city. Those sites were drilled in 1975. They were plugged and abandoned in 2000, and Chevron has approached us about an interest in replugging these with current standards from the state. So we are under discussion with them, and I just wanted to bring this, this information before the council. The three locations are located, you know, in, in this area, which is called Cutler. It is actually E470. The secondary location is called Farner. It is located in a Freiko easement. And then, the Erger 1 property is actually located on Commerce City land. The land is currently used as stormwater detention, and, and so, we just wanted to bring this before you, because we are under discussion with them. We're requesting summaries of each site and the various work that will be involved with other departments, to understand what kind of agreements we need to prepare and what, what this work truly is when they replug. We'll also be looking at that for, for a neighborhood conversation as well. But we'll continue to provide you with updates on timelines and a variety of processes in the, in the next future months. Currently, we have just had one conversation with them, but we're actively trying to email them again to follow up and ensure that we have further communication with them. And, and just to stay abreast, we, we do provide this information on a weekly basis if we have updates like these in our city manager's weekend review report. So just look to the E3 area for that information. Adams County has also provided us with some of their oil and gas updates. There is an Edmondson update that on February 5th, the county, the county's air quality program specialist reviewed monitoring reports for the Edmondson pad, and there were no concerns noted from that data or exceedances of state standards. They did note that the sensors are new and that there will be more to measure and provide information about over, over time. The Lennon move-in rig up information, that involved an off-site Adams County oil and gas well site, and we requested a little bit more information from the oil and gas administrator about this, and he just noted that they were temporarily plugging that well to, due to nearby drilling activity, and ensuring that there is a safety level from, from that perspective. He also let us know about a fire at a fracking site that was located in Brighton. It was put out the same day that it was reported, but this was located a mile north of Commerce City on the Brighton-Lates pad. And then, we also received a, informative FYI on oil and gas hearings that Adams County will be considering, and those will be under their new oil and gas regulations. The two sites that are being conducted, or the hearings that are being conducted on March 18th are not located nearby Commerce City, but the haul routes could affect the driving around the city. And then, in terms of environmental exceedances at Suncor, those are located on your screen. These, this compliance period was from mid-December to mid-January, and there were, there were several that were related to each other. So the two in December were under the same exceedance, and then, there was one reported on December 25th, and then, there were six that were reported due to a Plant 1 emergency shutdown on January 15th. And that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you very much, Libby. That was very helpful.
Oh, your button.
My mic. The, the TR Ranch was originally home to two potential sites, Owl and Falcon, before Chevron got involved. Those were Edmondson sites, so they have not been fracked into communities. One of them was going to go all the way under Buffalo Mesa, and the other one was going to go under Buffalo Run. There were something like 20, 30 wells that would have been drilled. So I think very interesting information that they're plugging wells. Edmondson is going to frac under Outlook. And here's my concern, because they are plugging wells, and plugging wells according to new regulations, the wells in the Outlook neighborhood were plugged in the 70s, for the most part. I think that we should look into that, because these are residents in Outlook. And any wells that could, any old wells that were plugged properly could cause a problem when they start coming under the freeway and over into Outlook. So I have the material on that, if you want me to share, so that you don't have to re-look it up, but I do, I would love to see if we should now pursue that again, because it sounds like they're getting closer to actually drilling across E470.
Mayor Pro Tem, I would greatly take any information that you have, so please, please send it away.
All righty. That sounds good. Thank you very much. I appreciate it again, and that is a lot of emissions reports for Suncor. I did talk to the Attorney General's Office about the fact that we are not getting notifications anymore on the system, the agreement that was made with Suncor, and I was curious about that. And it was noted by the investigator for the Attorney General's Office that she too hasn't been receiving them, so they were going to be looking into that, because none of those came through the notification pipeline.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other councilmembers with questions? Councilmember Chacon?
Thank you, Susan Noble, or Councilmember Noble, for, Mayor Pro Tem, for bringing that up as well, and thank you for your report. I know, as of today, the ECMC is also going, and they hired staff finally, to help with cumulative impacts, or ESHA's Equity Analysis of Cumulative Impacts. That bill was signed in Commerce City last summer, I believe, which was 1338, headed by Representative Rootnow. They're going to be helping with monitoring, especially for the second half of EnviroScreen. So I know that they're going to also be asking about where are those reports, not just for Suncor, but for other industries in cumulative impacts, to air and water specifically. So I can forward you the contact information for their staff that just was newly hired, but they will be doing, the ECMC Energy Carbon Management Commission will be doing ESHA's pretty soon, so Equity Analysis of Cumulative Impacts, that might be helpful here to also update.
We, we would kindly take that information as well, Councilwoman Chacon. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'll forward that info as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. Thank you so much for the presentation and all your hard work on it. I see that you are looking at things regionally, as you were asked, and you have no idea how much that's appreciated, because I know it's extra work for you, but you've taken that on. And what happens in this region impacts the people who live here, and so, we do need to know about all of this. You know, I'm very concerned about all of the wells being properly plugged, especially with new drilling coming in, because unfortunately, pipes do leak, and then, the methane travels underground. And as a matter of fact, back in 2017, there were two sisters that were burned when they flipped the light switch on in their bedroom in the basement, because the natural gas had traveled through the ground into the basement and collected there. So you never know. Natural gas has no smell, and the only reason that we do have odor added to it is because of a terrible catastrophe that happened in Texas back in, I believe it was 1930, and that is when they decided that they would put some kind of odor into it so that people could be warned about leaks. And I think there were over 300 kids and teachers and parents who lost their lives in, in that explosion, just as the school was letting out, I believe, for the weekend. So accidents do happen. We have to be aware, and we have to be knowledgeable. So I really thank you for all of your work that you're doing here, and just, please, please keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you, Libby, for your presentation. I had a question, since Egger 1 is close to Outlook, will the residents over in that area, plus, I guess it would be enclave with the county, will those residents be notified when work starts?
So, thank you for that question, Mayor. We are looking into kind of general policies and procedures that a lot of our regional partners do, because we really don't have a lot of these policies in place at this time. But Chevron is very much so asking us our level of comfort and, and what kind of protocols we, we would like to explore with us. And, you know, we're, we're looking into that, but there will definitely be some form of a notice, possibly a public meeting, if not, at least, an informative document that will be sent to the nearby neighbors.
Thank you. And have you been in contact with the DESNI for Adams County?
Yes. We are very grateful that Adams County has a wonderful oil and gas administrator and other supporting staff as well. other supporting staff as well, and we stay in close touch with them.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Onto consent agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routine, procedural, informational, self-explanatory, are we talking, non-controversial, self-explanatory, sorry. These items are presented to council for a single motion to vote. Any member of council may ask to remove a specific item off the consent agenda for further discussion in a separate vote. Tonight, there are 15 items on a consent agenda. Do any council members wish to remove any items? Councilmember Douglas, did you, sorry, I didn't clear it before. Okay. Do any council members wish to remove any item? Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you. Yes, I would like to remove ordinance 2658, 2662, 2663, and 2665. And I would also like to remove Resolution 2025-027.
All right. Okay, and a motion is second to approve the consent agenda as amended. Councilmember Dukes?
Just a question regarding the removal of these consent items for Mayor Pro Tem. Is it possible to provide a rationale for why? And also, were these items discussed beforehand with the city manager? I guess the questions asked beforehand, that's my question.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Yes.
Okay. Any other council members have questions? All right.
I'm sorry, the second part of the question was the rationale, removing all of them.
I will be giving my rationale when we discuss the items. The procedure and the process is that any council member may remove an item, and then we vote on the ones that are not removed. It isn't a vote as to whether I can remove or not, Councilmember Dukes.
No, no, I understand it's not a vote, as I have read the city council policies as well. It was a question for clarification, a simple question.
Councilmember Kim?
So moved on the amendment of that consent agenda.
Thank you, sir. All right. Will the city clerk take a roll call, sorry, read the title, take a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Kim?
Mayor, can you remind us who the motion maker in the second was for this consent agenda as amended, please?
Good question. Who made the first? I'll make the first. Let me, councilmember, I made the first.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sorry.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes, as amended.
Thank you. Oh.
Minutes of the February 3, 2025, regular meeting.
Ordinance 2667, an ordinance amending the 2024 budget of the City of Commerce City by revising multiple inter-fund transfers of American Rescue Plan Act funding and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Ordinance 2669, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City by reappropriating remaining American Rescue Plan Act funding balances in the General Fund, Capital Expenditures Fund, Fleet Management Fund, and Facility Services Fund, and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Resolution 2025-020, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and Adams County and the Adams County Animal Shelter Adoption Center. Resolution 2025-021, a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement between the City of Commerce City and the Adams County Sheriff's Office for the Provision of Law Enforcement and Administrative Personnel. Ordinance 2025-026, a resolution in support of an application for Great Outdoors Colorado Community Impact Grant. Resolution 2025-030, a resolution appointing members of designated boards and commissions of Commerce City. Resolution 2025-033, a resolution finding substantial compliance of the annexation petition in case AN24-0005, known as the Northwest Corner of East 96th Avenue and Piccadilly Road annexation, and setting a public hearing to determine eligibility for such annexation. Resolution 2025-044, a resolution amending council policy number CP-2 to clarify city council agenda input process. Resolution 2025-046, a resolution approving Third Amendment to amended and restated intergovernmental agreement, loaning funds from the City of Commerce City to the urban renewal authority of the City of Commerce City.
Yeah, passes seven to one. Sorry about that. That vote passes seven to one.
No, I.
That's not, that's not the new vote. That's the old.
Well, I should be a yes vote.
She cleared it. Kim, did you reset that? Was that correct? Because the last one was, NLC trip was eight to one.
Okay. It was my understanding that we was, the motion was to approve amending the consent agenda, and I voted no on that.
Right. That never came up, so sorry about that. Could you redo this?
It was amended.
Mayor, we don't vote to amend the consent agenda. We vote to.
Right. He just voted incorrect. It was stated, when it was stated about the amendment.
Sir, are you asking for a revote on the consent agenda as amended?
Yes. Councilmember Teeter was thinking we were voting the other item.
And then open. All right, your vote is open.
Thank you.
Councilmember Chacon, are you still an aye for that?
Yes, I'm an aye.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that passes unanimously eight with one excused absence. All right. Okay. Okay, let's see. All right, councilmember, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. I'll start with the four ordinances, 2658, 2662, and 2663, and 2665. These are all grants to the City of Commerce City. They are federal grants. They range from around $300,000 to $9.6 million, and they tally $13 million. I just wanted, given the fact that we had a meeting with the Department of Local Affairs last Thursday, that was attended via Zoom by over 500 elected officials in Colorado and staff to understand the impacts of budget changes, reductions in budgets for various agencies, and what the impacts would have on these grants. So I just wanted us to be able to have clarity on this, should anything occur that affects us in any fashion. It isn't necessarily the city. It could be happening at the federal level as well. So if we could, city manager, talk about this a little bit. And then also, my question is regarding which ones are the kind of grants where you do the work and then you request the money after that? So do we actually have the cash in hand on these, or is it reimbursements?
Thank you for that question, Mayor Pro Tem. I'd like to start with ordinance 2665, just to point a clarity on that one. That's not grant-related. That's actual unassigned general fund balance in which we're shifting from.
My mistake. Thank you.
No worries. For ordinance 2658, 2662, 2663, all of those three grants are what we consider reimbursable. So that means we will perform the work and then receive the funds. That being said, we do have signed grant agreements for all three. So as we currently navigate this existing environment, we believe that we are solid. But once again, anything can change, but right now, we're operating as business as usual. We have grant agreements for all three signed, with those grantors being the Federal Railroad Administration for 2658, Justice Assistant Grant for 2662, and Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program for 2663.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. Would you like to vote on those separately, or want to wait for the other one as well?
You'll need to vote on them separately.
Vote separate? Okay.
Yes.
All right. We're ready.
You need a motion in a second for each one.
Oh, sorry about that.
That's okay.
All right. Need a motion and second to adopt ordinance 2658.
So moved.
Councilmember, Kim?
Second.
Okay. Motion to the floors to adopt ordinance 2658.
Ordinance 2658, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of Federal Railroad Administration funds in the amount of $9,589,000 for the Consolidated Rail Infrastructure and Safety Improvements Grant Program and authorization of the expenditure thereof. Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passed unanimously eight with one excused absence. Okay, on to ordinance 2662. Need a motion and second for ordinance 2662. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
I move to accept ordinance 2662.
Councilmember Kim?
Second.
All right. Thank you.
Ordinance 2662, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, JAG program, grant funds in the amount of $28,395, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes eight yeses and one excused absence. On to ordinance 2663. Need a motion and second to approve ordinance 2663. Councilmember Kim?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Second half.
Okay. So a second, a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2663. I'll ask the clerk to read the title and take a roll call vote.
Ordinance 2663, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by the recognition of Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program funds for fiscal year 2026 in the amount of $484,560 for Tower Road and Quebec Parkway Corridor signal operations upgrades in the Public Works Department, and the authorization of the expenditure thereof. Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously eight with one excused absence. All right, on to, need a motion and a second to approve ordinance 2665. Councilmember Kim?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Second.
Okay. Motion to the floors to approve ordinance 2665, as written.
Ordinance 2665, an ordinance amending the 2025 budget of the City of Commerce City, Colorado by appropriating unencumbered retained earnings in the Fleet Management Fund to be used for fleet acquisitions for a total amount of $2,685,000, and authorizing the expenditure thereof. Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, that passes eight unanimous votes and one excused absence. On to Resolution 225-027. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. I'm bringing this forward for clarification. This is a resolution amending council policy CP2 to clarify city council agenda input process. I talked with city attorney Lee Zarzaki about this prior to the meeting. I just want to make certain things clear. First of all, at the end of every public agenda, such as tonight, there are links to draft agendas, upcoming draft agendas. We have had those draft agendas linked to our city council agenda for months and months and months. Any council member, any council member may look at those draft agendas and may comment on them during the meeting. In addition, they are available to the entire public. You can all link to those draft council agendas and see what's upcoming and what we will be working on. In addition, on July 13th of 2024, the city council held a, well, they called it an efficiency meeting, and at that efficiency meeting, we made several agreements. In fact, the agreements, you can't really see. The agreements were written in green and signed by all of us present in red. Seven of us were present, two council members couldn't attend. Among the outcomes was input from mayor on agenda. So this was in July of 2024. And that is how we proceeded after that. The reason that was done is because our meetings were running late, and the city council wanted to see if there was something that could be done if there was participation from the mayor regarding some issues that might run longer than other issues, for example. But it had nothing to do with changing around the agenda, strictly informing of controversial issues that we're aware of because we're in the community. I would like for clarification, what prompted the motion by the motion maker? Why did the motion maker make this motion last week?
City attorney Zarzaki?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted to clarify. So the items that I had listed, and I looked at the clerk, this item is item 2025-027. That was called out. It appears that.
Oh, that's the wrong one.
Yes, so the Resolution 2025-044.
Has passed.
Has passed. It's the council policy to issue. So in order to, I think the appropriate thing to do would be to resolve 2025-027 first. If there is, if there's interest in having a conversation about 2025-044, the appropriate procedural way to do that would be to motion to reconsider that vote. It would require a two-thirds vote to have that reconsidered, but it is the same night that the original motion was made. That would allow an opportunity, if the two-thirds vote was approved, for you all to have that conversation. If not, alternatively, the questioning could take place during admin council business.
City attorney Zarzaki, due to my error, I will. City Attorney Zarzeki, due to my error, I will withdraw my questions and hold them until administrative council business so we can move forward on this.
Understood.
My apologies.
No worries.
Okay, on to resolution, so-
So there needs to be a motion to approve.
Yeah, motion to approve. Motion to approve resolution 2025-027. Need a motion and a second to approve. Councilmember Kim?
So moved.
Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
I'll second that.
All right, have a first and a second.
Resolution 2025-027, a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract with David Evans and Associates, Inc. for construction management of the East 88th Avenue, Segment A Construction Project. Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes unanimously eight with one excused absence. All right, thank you very much. All right, on to public hearings. Does this council need a break? You want to proceed? Oh, okay, we'll take a five-minute reset. All right, welcome back. We are reconvening. I'll wait for Councilmember Dukes to come back here. Yes. All right, public hearing. Ordinance PUD A23-004 approving Burlington Northern Cattellis PUD. Tonight's public hearing is on the Burlington, well, I already said that. Okay, this is amendment, this is on, I'm sorry, I repeat it, but I forgot to add the amendment. Tonight's public hearing is on Burlington Northern Cattellis PUD Amendment Number Six. I remind council of the following. Only ask questions and gather facts, but not express opinion or indicate how you will vote. You are not permitted to provide testimony which to participate in decision. Only rely on the facts developed in this hearing and in the record, and only those facts through the criteria in the Land Development Code. I will invite the city attorney to address council.
Is there any council member who cannot hear this matter and make a determination fairly and impartially based on the record before you and the facts and evidence as developed at the public hearing? The record will reflect that no member of council has indicated an inability to be fair and impartial. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I will now open the public hearing. Per council policy CP22, the applicant in the city shall be limited to 10 minutes each for their presentation. I will invite the applicant to make the presentation. Oh, sir. The button right there.
There we go. Good evening to the council. My name is Alan Jacob. I'm with Car Wash Pro Designers. We're car wash consultants. This comes before the council on a property commonly known as 12411 East 104th Avenue on a PUD Amendment Number Six application. And the primary purpose of the application is to add a use specifically in express car wash facility, which we, we call an auto spa. The history of this application includes a neighborhood meeting that we conducted as part of the procedure for this application. In the, in that neighborhood meeting, we met with the president and vice president of the homeowners association adjacent to this property, and they were in favor of the PUD amendment, and there were no objectors at the neighborhood meeting. We sent out legal notices as required and did not receive any feedback directly to us. The PUD amendment comes under section 21, the criteria for the amendment come under section 21-3232, subparagraph four, subsections A through I. During the planning commission hearing, we met all of the criteria. However, the planning commission noted three specifics, subparagraph C, E, and F, to vote to deny the PUD Amendment Number Six. And I want to talk about those three briefly. C indicates that the PUD addresses a unique situation, confers a substantial benefit to the city, or incorporates creative site design. And later on in the subparagraph, it also mentions unique architecture or design. We believe that we meet this criteria for two reasons. One, it does address a unique situation. The design of the interior of this wash is a belt-driven car wash with a touchless option. It'll be one of its only kind in the state of Florida. I mean, in the state of Colorado, sorry. I wish I was in Florida. It's warmer. And the reason why that's important is because new cars are coated with a ceramic coating, and that coating is damaged by friction. And one of the first things that a dealership will tell a new car buyer is do not put it through a friction wash. It'll remove that ceramic coating. Older vehicles are also putting on this ceramic coating, and what it does, it protects vehicles from pebbles or rocks striking them. So there are no car washes of this caliber in, in the adjacent area, in the nearby area or Denver metro area. And that's why it satisfies the unique situation. The other part of subsection, paragraph C, is the unique architecture. This building design has won awards by different cities, one very recently in the village of Algonquin, Illinois. It was awarded the most architecturally aesthetic building in the village within that year. So based on that criteria, we believe we meet subsection C. Subsection E states, "The PUD is integrated and connected with adjacent development throughout street sidewalk connections and trails." And indeed does that. There's a Starbucks next door. There's an adjacent property next door that is yet to be developed. There's a layout which provides connections and access throughout the site and to neighboring developments. We clearly meet that criteria, we believe. And then finally, criteria F, "To the maximum extent feasible, the proposal mitigates any potential significant adverse impacts." Two of the things that were discussed were traffic and noise. We submitted a traffic study, which was accepted by the traffic engineer for the City of Commerce City, noting minimal or no traffic impact. We also submitted a sound study, which include decibel readings. And in this PUD, we actually are improving it by adding architectural standards to the PUD. And we are also adding a decibel maximum for, for this commercial property at, I believe we chose 65. And we do not exceed that. We searched the city code and we did not find, and I think we confirmed that the City of Commerce City does not have an ordinance for maximum decibels at, at commercial property lines. And we're hoping maybe this PUD amendment would spark an ordinance such as that. But based upon those two factors alone, we believe we're improving the PUD by amending it to include those standards. We believe that this use brings a diverse use to the commercial space along 104th Avenue. You have a Starbucks there. There's a Conoco there. There's Domino's Pizza there. And instead of having another pizza place or another gas station, another coffee shop, you would have an, an auto spa, which utilizes the state-of-the-art equipment where, you know, shoppers in the facility, in the facilities nearby would have the convenience of having a car wash while they're visiting a Starbucks or picking up pizza. Up the block, few blocks over, there's a McDonald's, Jimmy John's, Walgreens, Dutch Brothers Coffee. So I believe this is a very excellent addition to the commercial space along 104th Avenue. And like I said, we use state-of-the-art equipment. We use things called stealth blowers. This is not your typical industrial car wash that's attached to a gas station where it's very loud. It's very, very quiet. We have actual videos in, in the display. If you'd like to play them to actually see what a car wash just like this, what kind of sounds it does make and how it operates. There's been five previous amendments to this PUD, and there's another subsection, subsection five under 21-3232, which states that an owner of a property in a PUD can ask for the PUD to be amended so long as it does not contradict any development agreement within the PUD. And there is no development agreement within the PUD that does not allow a car wash. So we believe that it is the right of the property owner to ask for this amendment to be approved. I want to thank the planning department, the city engineers, and particularly Nicholas Berry. They've been excellent. They are not just the type of planning department that gives you an application and says apply. They actually think things through. They discuss. They do critical analysis. And they advise as, as a good planning department would. So I want to, I want to thank you guys particularly for doing that. If I could just play through the slides, I don't have the remote. Do you have it? Okay. Is this the first one? Okay, so as you can see on the slide there, that's the actual design, the architectural design. You can see the two towers. We try to make it look as much as a modern-day bank rather than a car wash, so it's aesthetically pleasing. It has this stone facade, the glass on top of the towers, and then the tunnel in the center. Next slide. This is an aerial view of how it would look. As you can see, the, there's ample parking for vacuums. Our, our traffic engineer and civil engineer work together to make sure the internal traffic movement there allows for stacking and doesn't allow for any backup onto the thoroughfare. This is another angle of the building, I think looking west, looking east. These are the car wash, or the vacuums along the car wash. They're also very, very quiet. The actual housing unit is separate inside the building, so it's not heard outside. Another viewpoint. Next slide. This is the entry into the car wash with the pay stations, pay lanes on the left side. This is the site plan. You can see- on the left side. This is the site plan. You can see that we have incorporated as much as we could landscaping to beautify the site plan. You can see how traffic would easily flow in and out of it. Next slide. This is a viewpoint from the neighborhood. Initially, we had no fence there. And then after the planning department and talking to a couple of neighbors, they said they would like to see what a fence would look like. We put a fence up, but it did not look aesthetically pleasing, so we took it down. The petition is open to either way, whatever is more aesthetically pleasing to the neighbors and to the city. Another viewpoint from neighbor. Okay, this identifies the vacant land. You can see the arrow. And then there's another one right to the east of it that is not yet developed, which probably will be and create a buffer between our facility and the houses to the east. Another aerial shot.
Thirteen seconds left. Nick Blom with Car Wash Pro Designers. This is a building that's already constructed. We want to show how close it was to residents. Another building that we construction, constructed to show how close it is to residential homes.
Okay, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate that. Does any council members have any questions? For the applicant? Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. You noted that your list for the PUD amendment, you have added items and removed items. What items have you added beyond the car wash?
We've added a few other items that are commercially feasible.
Such as specifically, what are they?
Fast food, fast food places, restaurants, store, retail establishments, things like that. But we're particularly looking to add the auto use, the express auto use.
Okay. And gasoline service station?
No, we did not add that. I think that's allowed by right. However, because of the distance from other gas stations there, we could not put one there. I think the one is going across the street.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other council members have questions? I have a question. So you're the landowner? Is that correct?
Say that again.
Are you the landowner?
I am not the owner. The owner is here.
Okay. So I'm just, you know, we've had these hearings in the past, and this is a zoning hearing.
Yes.
Correct? Is that correct, attorney, city attorney Lee? Is this a zoning?
Yes, correct.
Well, I'm sorry, PUD zoning.
It's a PUD zoning hearing. You all, just for the record, you have before you your binders. On page four is the language that is, it's a copy of Section 213251 of the Land Development Code. The approval criteria is listed in subsection three. And yes, to answer your question, Mayor, this is a PUD zoning matter.
Okay. So, little late now, but I think there should be a better process to this, where the landowner brings a zoning PUD change without the items. Because what happens is, we're looking at the changes, because if this is amended, we'll allow other items to be part of this PUD. Currently, car wash is not part of PUD. Is that right?
As far as we can tell, no, it is not.
Okay. So, and we're here tonight, but that's the confusing part, is we have the zoning case, a zoning and a PUD, but we also have the item before us that has not been part of, that is not on the list.
If I can clarify, and Mayor, city staff may be able to clarify during their presentation, but I just want to reiterate. So what you have right now is there's an existing PUD zone, and it's in the administrative record. There's a document titled Existing PUD Zone Document. It lists under what is termed C, Commercial Uses, there are a number of currently allowed commercial uses on this property.
Correct.
What you're asked this evening is to consider amending that PUD to allow other uses. And in the proposed PUD amendment, there's a chart for allowed uses. So to Mayor Pro Tem's question, there are many other uses that are contemplated in that table that are beyond just a car wash.
Correct. Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Councilmember, do you have a question?
Thank you, Mayor. When, kind of jumping ahead to talking through some of the approved uses, it mentions a drive-in theater, a self-rental facility, and vehicle storage. Are those a part of the new PUD request, or is that removed from previous PUD?
I believe those are previous PUD allowed uses.
Thank you. The other question I have is with the planning commission rationale for specifically E, and you kind of referenced this in terms of the screening. What does that look like? So the idea that the screening would take, you looked at two schematics. Some had to screen, some didn't. What does that look like? And visually, how does that impact that area? And what it looks like in terms of making the correct turn? And then also the noise, is it, how much is that reduced noise?
So I think you're referring to paragraph F, because E is connectability to other sites. F is feasibility to mitigate.
Correct, sorry, yeah. Paragraph F, adjacent F.
So did you want to speak on that?
Well, to answer your question about the fence, we did, there was a request to add a fence, which we actually showed exhibits with the eight-foot tall fence that was pretty much from the front property line along the main road and went on one side, on the east side, went almost all the way back. And then on the west side, it went from the front property line, maybe halfway through the property.
Okay.
And when the development department actually saw the renderings of that, they suggested maybe we take the fence down, because it kind of hit the entire building and the full point of the aesthetics of the building. And they recommended as a suggestion that maybe we show it without it.
Okay.
Because it just took away from the aesthetics of the building. Now, what the client has recommended is that we be up open, and he's totally game for adding evergreens. Instead of having a fence, have a row of evergreens that would do the same thing as the fence line would do. Just wouldn't hide the, it wouldn't be this gigantic fence hiding everything.
Okay, okay.
And as far as the, as far as the sound goes, the traffic study that we submitted, and the traffic engineer for the city agreed that the ambient noise from 104th Street is at, I think, 70 to 75 decibels. This car wash maximum production is 65. And that's equivalent to whisper in a loud room where somebody's talking. It doesn't add to it. The ambient noise from the traffic would actually mask the noise, any noise that the car wash would emit.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. And I guess my last question is around rationale C, or criterion C. And I've heard you say, like, it adds unique, you add a unique situation because of the technology within the car wash?
Yes.
Is that, okay.
I'm sorry, was that the?
No, is that, is that what you're leaning towards?
Yes, sir.
Technology?
Yes, sir. One of them is the technology and its ability to wash a car without any friction. And the second is the unique, beautiful architecture that it will bring to the city of Commerce City along 104th. We believe we meet that criteria because we're adding that element, and we're also adding an architectural standard to the PUD.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Any council members have questions? All right, thank you. Appreciate that. All right. Now I'll invite Nick Berry, planner number two, to make the presentation.
Good evening, council members, Mayor Pro Tem, and Mayor. Before you this evening is what staff is calling Turnberry Car Wash containing case and ordinance number PDA 23-004. As a reminder for anyone that's tuning in for the first time this evening, so what is a PUD amendment? It's officially changing the zoning. Now, what does zoning do? Zoning sets the bulk development standards, which includes setbacks, heights, things like that. It also governs allowable or not allowable uses. In the case of this PUD before you this evening, they are amending the land use table to go from approximately 10 uses or use categories, and we'll get into that in a little bit in the presentation. And also adding, I'm sorry, excuse me, go from 10 uses to about 37, adding approximately 22 new uses to the property. In addition, the PUD is adding architectural standards as a requirement for development. So there are some assurances there as far as the architecture is concerned, and does set some development standards such as height setbacks, et cetera. Some of the details, like they were showing in there with their elevations and their site plans and their presentation, those will be reviewed in more detail at the time of a development plan. So what is city council deciding? It's whether or not the zoning and associated rules for how the property can be developed, and if the uses should be changed. Some aerial to provide a little context. As mentioned, there is an adjacent Starbucks to the west, a Domino's liquor store, like strip center to the northwest, vacant property to the east, and then a temporary RTD station to the south across 104th. For some additional context, the zoning map, or vicinity map, as we call it as well, this property is surrounded by the Turnberry PUD that includes properties across Revere, so that northwest, excuse me, the north-south street, and across 104th. So the Turnberry PUD is pretty expansive in that manner. As mentioned, property location 12411 East 104th Avenue. Kind of talked about the request itself already. We'll get into the comprehensive plan. It's characterized by as northern neighborhoods and northern range commercial. So as you'll see over the next couple of slides, these are from the comprehensive plan. The detail that provided kind of stacks. So broad picture, broad strokes, character areas, is a northern neighborhoods, which contemplates commercial uses as a secondary to residential. And it has a note that commercial uses should be residentially scaled. The economic development framework, the property, excuse me, the property is that black box kind of in the center, notes this property as north range commercial, which a few footnotes from that framework should be a mix of uses. The issues should be pedestrian scale and include 360-degree architecture. Finally, the last slide from the comprehensive plan. In the connected corridors, this property is contemplated both on the East 104th Avenue corridor plan and the Highway 2 Northern corridor plan. Both of those call out the same thing as a commercial development opportunity. In those, it's talking about wanting a mix of uses, pedestrian oriented, kind of both of those again, talking about quality site design, and an additional note of day-to-day retail. These site photos were taken back in November, when the hearing was first scheduled in December. Obviously, it's been continued a couple times since, but the property remains the same. Vacant. This is a view facing southeast, and a view facing northeast to the existing Turnberry Marketplace. As the applicant mentioned, a neighborhood meeting was held. The date for that meeting was October 24, 2024. Staff was in attendance and witnessed the two residents and their questions. The questions basically pertain to noise levels of the blowers or dryers, and the site circulation specifically, are they taking ingress and egress off of 104th, and impacts to the local road network? Public comments. So prior to the December Planning Commission meeting, staff received no written comments. At the December and February Planning Commission meetings, public commenters came forward with concerns that it can be categories in the five categories. So financial viability of a car wash, traffic, trash, noise, air quality. Additionally, written comments received prior to the February Planning Commission meeting, those public comments were provided for you in your packet. So this was provided for you in an analysis, this, excuse me, this analysis was provided for you in the PUD amendment report. So we can kind of go into this if you have specific questions on what existing city standards there are to address some of the concerns of the neighborhood. In the interest of time, I'll kind of just zip through these, like, so we can come back to these if there's questions. We wanted to provide kind of the snapshot, the applicant referenced this noise study that was done. So the image on the left is without the noise walls being installed. The image on the right shows with the noise walls installed. As you can see, the noise walls create a zero, or as this noise study contemplated, less than 45 decibels at the east and west property lines versus without the noise walls. It's approximately 65 decibels at the property lines. For some interpretation, so there's these yellow numbers, yellow dots with numbers in them. So there are sensors placed to get the noise levels of 104th. And then the marker coming off of them shows the decibels at that marker. Those are all part of a projection using the equipment that the applicant is intending to install in their building. For some reference, the, what is decibel levels? So like I said, I can't provide some of the justifications or explanations for what, like a toilet flushing or vacuum cleaner at West District and all of that. But to provide some frame of reference, like, so the noise level at the property line is approximately 65 decibels. And as you can see, it kind of falls on this continuum of noise. And we can come back to this if there's further questions. So to provide some project analysis for you, so the site is surrounded by commercial zoning. Some of the properties have been developed. Some are yet to be developed. The property will take access from a private drive on the north side of the property, and they will not take access from 104th directly. The traffic study was reviewed by our city engineers, and they accepted the methods and conclusions of that study that the levels of service are not expected to change. And as a point of clarification in your council communication, staff had indicated that there was a 0.05% change to traffic. That number is actually 0.5% change to traffic, just for a point of clarification there. But the noise study also was received in between the December Planning Commission meeting and the February Planning Commission meeting, indicated there be minimal impacts to the surrounding area. The traffics, or the noise study assumed installation of this eight-foot wall. So as you're reading through that, that might have skewed some of the conclusions of the study. As the applicant has mentioned, where staff is not recommending that the eight-foot wall be installed, as it'll be kind of a visual divider between the neighboring properties and kind of break up the otherwise natural flow of the connecting uses in that area. And so those analysis, the noise study was kind of provided to you to show both with and without the wall, and what those noise impacts would be. As mentioned, the uses are changing. We wanted to note that they are removing three currently allowed uses, which would be pharmacies, civic uses, and park-and-ride uses. So here's kind of a snip from the existing zone document and the proposed. Staff has done an analysis for you in your PUD amendment report, which laid it out on a table of what would be considered similar, and even comparing it to a comparable straight zoning district of C2. So we can go to that table if that's of interest to the council. But like I said, this is kind of just a general overview. So you have, you know, the 10 listed uses. When we mean land use category, like you can see, general office is the first one listed there. That could include a number of things. Usually, it's associated not just with, you know, your tax office, but, you know, it could be nail salons or things like of that nature as well. So like I said, it's more of a broader category than specific uses.
The 10-minute clock's up. Sorry about that. Thank you for your presentation, city council. How many questions for staff? Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Thank you very much for your presentation. And I appreciate the kind comments from the applicant about working with you. applicant about working with you. My question involves the uses, adding 22 uses. It's one thing if we were voting on a PUD amendment that allowed a car wash, but we're not. We're actually voting on 22 additional uses without a full discussion of those 22 additional uses. In addition, it removes the park and ride. So there is a park and ride south, on the south side of 104th. Does this PUD have anything to do with the property on the south side of 104th?
Okay, yeah, thank you for the question. So it sounded like there's maybe a two-parter there. I'll take the first one on the RTD. So it does not impact any other parcels, including the ones on the south side. This amendment is just for one property. As to the number of uses that are being provided, staff had directed the applicant to provide more than just one use in an instance, because zoning stays with the land or runs with the land regardless of timing, right? So in the next 20, 30 years, where staff wanted to look at it from big picture, what are the other uses that would be allowed? And we wouldn't, we didn't want to have only a car wash as the only allowable use for this property. For example, if something had happened in the development plan stage, which will come after this, where the applicant has decided to withdraw or sell the property, the only thing that could be there then would be a car wash. So we wanted to kind of look at it, or even in 20 or 30 years when we're no longer using car washes because we're on hoverboards or something like that, right? Like what are the, all of the uses that could be here? And so the applicant has come forward to propose a few of those, 30 some of those. So like I said, we can flip to, you know, and look at those more in detail. But as on the staff recommendations page, so you are able to remove or add some of the list, listed uses as a condition. So staff is recommending that you, removal of four of the uses. Some of them were mentioned by Councilmember Dukes. But there are some other uses that you could look to add or remove as a part of your approval of, of your conditions of approval.
Okay, yes, I did notice racetrack as well. So it is only this parcel next door to Starbucks, and it's not any of the other PUDs in the Catalyst Project, in the Turnberry Project?
That is correct. Yep. So it's just for this one parcel. Some of the other property owners were attempted to be contacted by the applicant, but they were not interested in joining this application.
Okay, could you go back to the page that shows all of the uses? There you are. Is there a way to make that bigger?
I will see. Let me zoom in.
No, it's not that good.
Mayor, if I may, this is also on page, on sheet three of the proposed PUD zone document, if you all have access to that.
And I can go to that too, if that's, if we want to go to my, the table that's been prepared in the PUD amendment report, or if we want to go to the proposed zone document itself, whichever is better to look at.
Mayor Protim, what do you want?
Under allowed uses?
To, so you could see a bigger picture.
I'm not seeing racetrack though.
So it's right, this one here?
Right, I see it there, but I don't see it on the, in the PUD amendment report.
So that one?
Oh, there it is. There it is, on the second page. Okay, because I think it would be, it definitely would be worth eliminating some of these.
So yeah, here's that, that table for you. It's comparing it to what's allowed for straight zoning, just for as a reference. You can see these are kind of grouped together because although the category in the current would be grocery store, these are all kind of similar and would be allowed under grocery store, the racetrack down here.
Thank you, Mayor Protim Noble. Councilmember Chacon.
Thank you for this. I really appreciate Mayor Protim Noble also for bringing that up. If there is a way that we can discuss either with the city or the applicant, how to update this first before approval, just because there are 22, and I want more than just a car wash there, and I appreciate that staff is looking at it that way, but I also want to know where there's going to be community need, whether it's now or in the future. Also, according to zoning, one of a couple of questions I think is for staff specifically is how many car washes are in this vicinity, or was there any kind of evaluation done for that space? How many are down 104th or within a mile to two miles of the space?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So there is a number of car washes along 104th. So there's the cobblestone car wash in the Bell Creek area, the Fox wash there on 104th and Chambers. Additionally, there's a newly constructed car wash up along 120th and Chambers. So there are a number of car washes. The city, however, does not have, the standard is for separation between car washes. So the city standard is a half mile, as it exists in our land development code, and this application meets that half mile requirement. To your question about within a mile or two, that analysis wasn't conducted because it's not one of our city standards. I want to say when we measured it out to the closest one, it was about 1 point, or excuse me, yeah, 1.5 miles to the Fox wash on 104th and Chambers.
So there's not necessarily a community need for another car wash? Like we have within every other block roughly a car wash there already?
Yeah, I mean, that would be a matter of the residents' opinions, I guess. Like I said, I don't want to speak on their behalf, but to your point, yes, there are a number of other car washes that are along the 104th corridor.
And then I think, did the applicant want anything other than a car wash first, or was this what they wanted in that space to be zoned?
Yeah, so at the time of pre-application, they made it known that that is what they intended to develop as a car wash?
And I think this is either for the applicant or city staff, how much water on average does do these car wash spaces use a day? And are there any harmful chemicals that are produced from this type of car wash? That's right near Burlington Ditch.
Thank you for that question. I'll bring the applicant back up to address that.
Hello, Councilmember Nick Spalone again. So we use biodegradable products. They're actually marine grade. We're a green footprint wash. So we use a very little amount of water. We introduce a lot of air, and all of our chemicals are, we don't even actually call them chemicals. We call them soaps, are marine grade soaps and 100% biodegradable, safe to fish life.
How much water on average a day would you roughly estimate?
So the, we actually have a sign that goes up in our wash. A typical wash in a house can take anywhere from 100 to 150 gallons. A typical full-service wash ranges somewhere around 70 to 80 gallons, or anywhere from 50 to 45, depending upon which wash you select.
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate you.
You're welcome.
Back to my first question really quick for staff. Is there a way that we can amend these 22 so that, one, we can update it so that any future, or for the comprehensive plan, that we can make it to where it's also meets community need, but we're able to present more options past community or with community?
Sure, yeah. Thank you for the question. So what you're looking at is more of a holistic view of allowable uses that would be contained in the land development code. What this amendment is requesting is just the allowable uses for one specific property that's about an acre in size in the Turnberry neighborhood. And so the provided or proposed uses by the applicant would not be far reaching, I guess. Like if we wanted to evaluate what uses should or should not be allowed, that, you know, that's definitely up to the council's discretion. And we can amend the, or make a condition of approval on this zone document to add or remove any uses. Does that answer your question?
Yes, just, just so we can update it honestly, because racetrack is, I think the other one is Bingo or Social Gaming Outlet. I don't think some of those would necessarily be applicable, so just wanted to.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Chacon. Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a question for staff. Thanks again for the, my first question was this, this document here, being able to see the before and after, and so that clarifies the rationale for adding 22. And you explained it, so I appreciate that as well. One thing I love clarification on is that, you know, with the planning commission and what I'm seeing with the staff criteria, staff says that this meets the criteria. And then the planning commission had a recommendation of three pretty big items. And can you, can you kind of talk through that, the difference in, I guess, how do you see it meets the criteria versus what the planning commission's interpret, interpretation? Or maybe just your interpretation meeting criteria as a staff?
Yeah, so some of that analysis was conducted here in the PUD amendment report, and I can kind of go through that. But generally speaking, the staff is taught to write the approval criteria in the affirmative and leave it up to you all to determine why or why not it would meet or doesn't meet the approval criteria, if that makes sense. So this was written in the affirmative to the specific ones. You have criteria C, so addresses a unique situation. More to the applicant's point is about the architectural standards that will be established by this PUD to bring higher level architecture as a requirement to this 104th corridor. Then E and F, so E, the previously approved PUD zone documents, again, this is the Sixth Amendment, so a lot of this has already been kind of predetermined, and it's just following up on what's already been established. And then criterion F, so the conditions that staff is proposing would help to mitigate the impacts, usually associated with a, with a car wash.
Okay, thank you. And then what I'm hearing you say is that currently in our land code, we don't have requirements for, the only requirement is point, or half a mile away from the spacing requirements for car washes. Is that correct?
Yeah, there are some additional requirements. So there's the spacing between uses. It can't go on a hard corner. Let me go to that real quick so I can speak to that. But so it's contained in that section 21-5218, so it's separation between the two, buffering between residential, can't be on the hard corner, those sorts of things are what's our standards.
And I guess when I'm, as I'm reading this and understanding it, this, this meets that criteria?
Correct, yeah. Because that it meets, it's not on a corner lot. It is buffered far enough from residential uses and is more than a half mile from other car washes. Correct.
And then when you, and then the other part, a public comment, or you had your public hearing, correct, or public outreach, and there was 22 people that came to tonight? Is that correct?
Okay, so there is a lot of twos going around. So there was, so there is two members in attendance for the neighborhood meeting.
Neighborhood, okay.
And then there was three people that spoke out at the December Planning Commission meeting.
Okay.
And then two commenters that also spoke at the February Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, and then there one written, written comment tonight, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. And that was provided for you in your packet.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Teeter?
Yes, sir. Has the applicant met all the city's standards?
Could you speak to what standards specifically you'd like me to address? In a general sense, we have reviewed it for all the requirements of the land development code as far as zoning. Some of the details provided in the site plan, staff has not done a review of, like if they're providing enough landscaping or something like that. So can you speak to maybe a little bit more what standards you're discussing?
Are there any requirements or, or that you set out that the applicant has not met?
So there are no standards that the applicant has not met, correct?
Okay, thank you. Thank you. City attorney, Sazaki?
Yes, Mayor, I was just going to clarify again. So the approval criteria by which council is reviewing this is under 3251 subsection 3. It's on page four of your binder. So just want to clarify, those are the criteria that you should be making a determination on. Those and only those are the ones. If you deem, if the body deems that those standards have, or those criteria have been met, then it should be approved. And if not, then you should have a discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to second round here, is any of the council members have questions? Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. So you said that there would be three that would be removed, and that would be the park and ride, the pharmacy, and what was the third one?
Yeah, so pharmacy civic uses. So that would include schools, museums, things that are, would be in that category of uses.
Something like a community center.
Correct, yeah, like a rec center or something, yeah.
And how were those three chosen?
So the applicant had provided a list of uses, and then staff has just conducted an analysis of what is currently allowed versus what are they proposing. And so I don't know if those were specifically chosen for one reason or another to be excluded, but like I said, that was.
So they, they took away three to add 22?
So like I said, that was somewhat of, at the direction of city staff to just contemplate all of the uses that should be allowed. And so it wasn't necessarily an exchange, the three for the 22. It was just, at the end of the process, the list of uses that they were proposing did not include these three.
Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, Mayor, I just, I wanted to see if I can clarify and get Mr. Berry to like, talk about the planning commission recommendation a little bit more, because that's key in how council might consider the vote. So really quick, on the uses, the uses are getting complex here. The, the proposed uses in the PUD amendment are those that the applicant has, wants to include on, on their property. So the, the proposed uses include several uses that are currently allowed under the existing PUD that they're proposing to remove, and those were the three uses that Mr. Berry and, and Councilmember Douglas were just talking about. But then staff also has some recommendations should City Council desire to, to move forward with a, an approval, which is contrary to what Planning Commission has recommended. Staff is recommending removal of additional uses that the applicant is currently proposing. And I just wanted Mr. Berry to like, show the, both the three criteria that Planning Commission felt that were not met, which are up on the screen right now. So criterion C, criterion E, and criterion F. And in the staff report, at the very end of the staff report, it goes into a little bit more detail of why Planning Commission felt those weren't met. But if planning, if City Council feels inclined to approve the application, staff is recommending a series of conditions to help further the application's compliance with the standards on that. And can you, can you show that really quick? And these are, these are the proposed additional conditions that need to be included in the PUD to both meet the representations of the applicant, talking about minimum noise generation, that's currently not in the PUD. So that would be a condition that staff recommends included in the PUD. That additional design criteria for the car wash use be included in the PUD that is currently not in the PUD to reinforce the outcomes of the noise study and, and the, and some of, some of the specifics of the noise study. And then that last bullet is removal of some of the listed uses that are contrary to uses typically found within C2 commercial zoning. So the drive-in theater, which would be extremely difficult to do on a property of this size, but that is not a use that is currently permitted in the PUD, nor is it permitted in the general commercial zone district, removal of the racetrack. Removal of the racetrack use, again, it's not a use that is appropriate for the site based upon the size of the site and the impacts associated with that use. Self-rental facilities, that is a use currently not allowed in the C2 Zone District or the PUD. It is a use that is permitted in, in the light industrial zone district, I believe. And then the final one is vehicle storage. Again, this is a use that is not typically allowed in the city's commercial zone districts. It's allowed in, in industrial zone districts. And so we would recommend those four uses be eliminated from the proposed use table. So what I wanted to kind of help council understand is that planning commission has a recommendation of denial. And within that recommendation, they articulated, based upon the evidence they heard, a rationale for why they don't believe the criteria is being met. But if council, being the ultimate decider of this issue, decides to approve this, contrary to the planning commission recommendation, these are additional conditions we would recommend that council impose on the application.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Douglas, were you done with your questions?
I wasn't, but I believe Mr. Brazel, and what he went over, gave me better clarification on, on how this all occurred and why some were added and removed. So thank you.
Hey, thank you. All right, any other councilmembers have questions before I go to the, before I go to second round? I have a question. How's this, this procedure with, with amendments, with amendment six? Was there previously, within those one through five, at this, at any given time, were those brought up prior to amendment six? As far as adding other inclusionary items?
Thank you for the question, yeah. So the other amendments, so specifically amendment number five was modifying residential densities. Some of the other amendments were modifying the land area associated with certain planning areas. And then some of the other amendments were dealing with the development of the property specifically. And so the commercial land uses, the, the 10 presented in front of you tonight, have been remained consistent since the original adoption in 1999, and have continued through to, to present day.
Yeah, thank you. And you say in the Land Development Code, there can't be another car wash within a half a mile, right? Correct?
That is the standard in the LEC, correct?
Okay, does that include a gas station with the car wash? Is that, is, would that be deemed the same, or is that something different?
So there are supplemental standards for both a car wash and for what the Land Development calls, calls fuel sales. And so there is an accessory car wash as a part of the fuel sales. And so there are separation requirements between fuel sales and, and their relationship to major intersections. But there wouldn't, I don't know if we would necessarily count a single bay car wash within that half mile, if that makes sense. Does that answer your question? Because they're contained in two different sections of supplemental standards.
Right, because there's a grease monkey across the street from that Fox car wash that has two, two bays. And that's just right across the street next to Walgreens.
So yeah, it looks like in, in that instance, because it was two separate regulations that they were not considered.
Okay, all right, appreciate that. All right, thank you. That's all the questions I have now. Mayor Pro Tim Noble?
Would it be possible to remove other criteria? Not criteria, sorry, sorry, uses? Auto rental, machinery sales, motor vehicle dealership, tire shop, vehicle storage?
Certainly, that is.
Oh, I see vehicle storage on there, okay.
Yeah, that was just the ones that were recommended because of their inability to meet the, one of the approval criteria, which speaks to mitigating impacts. If these were, uses were to be allowed, then you wouldn't necessarily be able to mitigate those impacts, whether they be noise or, or visual. So you'd have to tie it to some approval criteria as to why you would be eliminating those additional uses. But otherwise, yes, you could eliminate more uses than just these four.
The planning commission denied the project a month ago?
That is correct, yep, at, at the February 3rd.
And what did you negotiate with the developer in the last four weeks?
So as a part of the process, there were no changes between the planning commission meeting and this meeting, so that the project was to remain consistent across the, the two meetings in respect to the, the public input and everything, that there was no negotiations that were happening in that timeframe.
Okay, so it was recommended to them also to remove four uses and add 22?
So the additional uses were on their proposed uses? And then staff was just recommending that those four uses be removed.
Right, and when did you come to that conclusion? Was that before the planning commission meeting or after the planning commission meeting?
It was prior. So it was known at the public commission, excuse me, the planning commission meeting, that those should be removed. The conversation at the planning commission mostly centered around the, the car wash use and was ultimately what they deemed appropriate for denial, recommendation for denial was the, and so those uses have been consistent throughout.
Okay, so it was the exact same presentation that we're receiving, then?
Some additions were, were made to help beef out the conversation, including this planning commission recommendation side. This, the staff recommendation slide was consolidated. It was in two or three different slides, so there was some streamlining, and then some additional information, just for you all's benefit.
Okay, so Nick, before the planning commission meeting, the team had recommended removal of some of the listed uses?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other councilmembers? Okay, thank you, Nick. Okay, I will now invite the public to provide testimony and ask the city clerk. Has anyone signed up for public comments to testify to this hearing?
Yes, Mayor, we had one person signed up in person.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, we welcome all comments and inputs to ensure efficiency, efficient hearing. All persons are required to observe the following. Each person desired to speak must have registered with the city clerk. When you are recognized to speak, please approach the podium, state your name and address for the record, and state whether or not you support or, or whether you support or oppose the case before providing testimony. All comments and testimony shall be made from the podium, and no comments or testimony shall be presented from the audience. Comments or testimonies are to be directed to the mayor and the city council. Dialogue inquiries to the members of staff or to the seated audience is not permitted. Inquiries that require staff response will be referred to the staff by the mayor. It is our desire to hear all relevant testimony on this, on this topic in a timely manner. Within atmospheric respect, our procedures are designed to ensure that occurs. All public comments shall be limited to three minutes, and I thank you for your cooperation. We look forward to hearing your comments.
Bob Hannan, if you're in the chambers, please come on up, and you'll have three minutes to speak.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you for your time tonight. I've tried not to take up too much of it. Looks like, listening to the presentations that you guys have seen, the letter that I had sent in regards to the additional car washes in the area, I still have conflicts with noise pollution, air pollution, just in general. Garbage is gonna be involved with this car wash if it is approved to do this. Looking at the site setup, I mean, at any given time, and this is what they would want, is to have that thing full. You're gonna have anywhere from 15 cars waiting, 10 to 20 cars using a vacuum, and it's gotta be more than the decibels that they're speaking of. They didn't do the complete presentation, so I really can't tell you what I saw at the planning commission. But my counterpart was unable to be here tonight. We're the only two that really are impacted by this, because it's technically in our backyard. If I sit on my deck or my neighbor's, that is all we would see at that point. With it being that close, there's got to be, there's gotta be more noise than what they're, what they're saying. It just has to be. You got that many cars sitting there, that's the air pollution that I was speaking of. The vacuum's running, that's your noise. I know there really isn't much more that I can say to you folks, but just take into consideration that, you know, my home, my two neighbors' homes, we're the only ones that are being impacted by this. Nobody behind us to the east, because our homes are big enough that they're gonna block everything. So that is probably why that you're not getting more pushback on this, I guess, or more input. Because they're not directly related to this. They're not gonna see it sitting on their back patio. They're not gonna see it sitting on their front deck. It's just something, yes, I understand that it was construction or a commercial area when I purchased my home and built it. But building my dream home with the view that it has, I really don't want a car wash in there with noise and air pollution and garbage. I mean, there's, people just don't care when they go to a car wash. There's garbage everywhere. I've seen it firsthand at the one that I go to wash my truck at. So please take that all into consideration when you're taking this vote. Thank you for your time.
Exactly, appreciate that.
Mr., Mr. Hannan, real quick, can you state for the record whether you support or oppose the case?
To amend this?
For this case, can you state for the record whether you support or oppose it?
I oppose it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Is anybody to register online to make a comment?
That concludes all of our public testimonies tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, city manager, I mean, city attorney Zarzaki. Since the 10 minutes was used up for rebuttal, what's the procedures after that?
That's a great question, Mayor. 10 minutes is the general time allotted for each party. You have some discretion as to whether or not you would like to allow additional time. I would also like to add, to the extent that any council member has additional questions, my recommendation is, strong recommendation is that you do that now, prior to closing the hearing, because if additional questions were to arise, you'd have to reopen the hearing to ask those questions, so it's on the administrative record.
Okay. Does any councilmembers have any questions? Councilmember Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. So this goes to the applicant, or, or what, or even to the planner as well, just for, for your, your awareness. There's the club car wash off 120th and Chambers, Fox car wash off 104th and Chambers, cobblestone car wash off 104th and 85, Highway 85, reunion car wash off 104th and Tower, express car wash off a tire road near Canopy Airport Parking. There's all those, that's all in the, this, in the area of Commerce City. And, and you know, I don't, why a car wash? I, I look at the different available uses that's out there. And you know, I, I gotta say that I, you know, when we had a developer meeting, and it's something I mentioned to them was, was, was what I heard, what I hear from residents, right? It's like they always, they, they want, they need another retail place. They wanna see maybe another grocery store or something of that effect. Now, I get it, you know, grocery stores, you know, it's gonna be dependent on the actual company for, it's gonna be at risk for them. It has to make sense for them to come in. I see the allowable uses on the amendment, eating and drinking establishment. You know, in that corner there, I see there's a port tap house, there's taco sushi that's been under construction for the past 400 years now. There's also the, there's also the, the gym there, there is turnberry liquor, there is the Domino's, there's also Starbucks. I, I guess my, my main question is, under the allowable uses, why not any of these? Why not another eating establishment? Why not a restaurant with or without a drive-through? Financial institution bake, obviously that's a no. I mean, another food or beverage sale, I mean, convenience store, that'd be awesome, wouldn't it? I mean, I'm just trying to figure out why another car wash? I mean, that just, to me, I, I don't, I don't think about, I don't think that, you know, when, when I think about, you know, what, what is it, do I really wanna see in Commerce City that's considered a, you know, an amenity to live up here? Just think a car wash. And you're, before you answer that, I know you're, I mean, obviously, the spotless deal, don't get me wrong. That whole spotless, I get it, because I have a, I have a car myself. I like to take it to a spotless car wash, because I don't like, I don't like the brushes touching it, right? It's awesome, but still, car wash.
Thank you, councilmember Kim.
Before you answer that question, city attorney Zarzaki, could you?
Yeah, I just wanna, just remind folks, we are still in the hearing, so it should be, any commentary should be based on questions. I think councilmember Kim did ask a question, why a car wash? Just to remind folks, any question should be related to making a determination as to whether or not the respective approval criteria are being met.
Okay, so the 10 minutes was used up during the hearing, and I will allow two minutes for rebuttal.
Sorry, Mayor, just to interject, a question was posed by councilmember Kim, so.
Okay.
As part of that, this is not, this is not, he's, the applicant is answering the question, and it's not a part of his time.
Okay, that's valid, thank you. Go ahead and proceed, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, councilmember Kim, rest of the councilmembers. My name is Andrew Warner, I am the property owner, I intend to build the wash on this lot. Why a wash? I own car washes. I don't own grocery stores, I don't own retail establishments, I wouldn't know how to run them well. I do know how to run a car wash. I have, you know, others in the state of Colorado, on Western Slope, Westminster. You know, the economics play out. Yes, there are a number of car washes. There are also a great number of, you know, fast service food stores. You know, Wendy's and a Burger King can coexist across the street from each other. They've been that way for a long time, and car washes are evolving that way. It's becoming a, a common use pattern.
I'm gonna stop you just for one sec, you got 30 seconds. Just to clarify, you said you own car washes already?
Correct.
Is that correct? Okay, so then, I guess my other question, but before my time expires here, would be just, never mind. Go ahead, just continue on.
I, I'm happy to answer.
Nope, I'm good.
Okay.
I retract my thought.
Okay. So the why, the, the economics bear out. You know, it, it is a very viable location. We think it's additive to the community. You know, I live in the state, you know, not in Commerce City, but I do live, you know, on the front range. And I would love to build and continue to build your tax base. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Okay. I will allow the applicant two minutes to rebuttal. If there's anything you wanna, from what testimony you've heard?
Thank you again. I just wanna address a couple of things. I think one of the points of contention by the council is the number of uses. And like Mr. Berry said, it was based on staff recommendation, we added those. We just added the ones that we thought would fit within that realm. We are open to removal of any of those uses. I think the racetrack is probably a good one to remove. Maybe the drive-in movie theater probably wouldn't fit there. So we, we would be open to removing all those, as so long as the auto spa remains, and any other use that you all feel that could fit on that property in the future, or, or what have you, would, would remain in the application. As far as the gentleman who spoke, the neighbor, we've, we're, we've taken great lengths at, at trying to mitigate any of the complaints that they may have. And we will certainly work with them in the future if there, if ever a problem arises. Our client is very wide open to resolving any issues or complaints. We actually want him to be a customer of, of our clients. And finally, as for, as for, as far as garbage goes, we make sure that the, even though these are express auto facilities, we make sure they're staffed to make sure that there aren't any problems on the property. And one of them, or two of them, or three of them even, on, in busy times, would be rovers to go around and pick up garbage if ever it would be on the floor. be on the floor, because if, if the grounds of a, of a car wash are dirty, then the customer isn't going to pull in and use that facility. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we'll now close the public hearing. You have two options, option one and option two. I need a motion and a second, two.
Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Before you, anyone were to make a motion, I just wanna clarify something. There is a section, under zoning procedure under our charter, it's section 10.11b5. It is, it was in the staff, uh, presentation, but I do wanna highlight this. A vote office at the time of the vote, at the time that the vote is taken, is needed to overrule the recommendations of the planning commission. So, in this instance, the planning commission voted recommendation for denial, which means you need a minimum of five votes of approval. Just wanna clarify that, so there's not any confusion. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate that. All right, how does, uh, council want to proceed? Councilmember Kim.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to make a motion to deny ordinance P U D A 23 dash 004 and direct the city attorney to prepare written findings from the administrative record for adoption at the next regular meeting that the requested P U D zone document amendment for the property located at 12411 East 104th Avenue contained in case P U D A 23 dash 004 fails to meet the following criteria of the land development code, uh, looking at specifically for approval criteria 3C I, addresses a unique situation, confers a, confers a substantial benefit to the city, and so on. That is my motion. Unless I read that wrong.
Hey, motion's been read. Councilmember Douglas?
I would like to second that, please.
Okay. Motion made by councilmember Kim and second by councilmember Douglas. Motion was to deny ordinance P U D A 23 dash 004 and direct the city attorney to prepare written findings from the administrative record for adopting at this next regular meeting that requests P U D zone document amendment for the property located at 12411 East 104th Avenue contained in case P U D A 23 dash 004 fails to meet the following criteria in allowing development code, which is C, I'm sorry, 3C I, which addresses a unique situation for a substantial benefit to the city or incorporates or creates a design standards such as achieve the purpose set out in section 24 dash 4370 P U D zone district.
Your vote is open?
Hold on.
Discussion?
Discussion, yes.
Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Douglas?
So, just to be, um, clear, um, in denying this, the vote would be a yes, and I also did not feel that this met criteria C. It does not offer a unique situ- situation, it does not confer substantial benefit to the city, nor does it represent an improvement in quality over what could have been accomplished through strict applications of the otherwise applicable, uh, district or development standards. And that is my reason for denial.
Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor. I will also be not in support of this, um, based on a criterion rationale, um, it's hard to understand and see the unique situation at a car wash, while the technology is newer, it doesn't qualify our criteria C as a unique situation that, that benefits the city.
Okay. Councilmember Ford?
Thank you. You know, this is a very difficult one for me because we have been lacking commercial development in our community, but I also think about the comments made during citizen communication earlier, where, uh, we have seven or eight daycares, and another daycare wants to go in. It's not the role of the government to dictate, um, what the market drives, and, uh, we do need other uses within our community. I would tell the owner this, um, you might be in, in the gas, uh, in, in the, uh, business of car washes, you have a very valuable property with the intersection where you're located. There are a lot of uses that I think, um, our economic development team could work with you, um, to, to benefit you and this community by bringing in some of the desired uses of our residents. So please, don't, don't, uh, don't give up, but, um, other, I think it's, it behooves you and the city, if you sit down with our economic development team and look at a strategy, uh, where we can help you, help us, help you. And, um, really, that's where we need to get, is, we need to get to a point where we're working closer with property owners to be able to achieve the desired outcome for our residents. So, um, I don't, I, I know this is your business, um, I, I don't like to deny commercial uses because we need more commercial uses, but I also don't think, um, that we, you know, here's, here's the, the downside to a denial here. You have a use by right to do a gas station. There's a lot of people on this council that would not like to see another gas station go on that property, but you have a use by right to do it. So, um, you know, i- it, we're kinda putting ourself in harm's way by denying a car wash because I think other people would like to see a car wash before another gas station. However, um, you're the owner of the property, and you have rights that have to be, uh, supported, and, and, uh, um, so, you know, we're, we're at a risk by, uh, denying you this opportunity. I would say, though, on a collaborative effort, um, it's, it's beneficial to both the city and, um, you as the developer, and to our residents that are here, um, speaking, and I know there's only one person here saying, no, I don't want this, um, but we all live in the community, we all know there's some needs that we have. I, I don't think it's a grocery store site, but I think a restaurant would do very well there. Um, so, um, this one is, is difficult for me, and, uh, um, you know, you, you have the property, you have rights that come with that property, and you can utilize them the way you wish, but I think there are opportunities, and I'm speaking not just to the owner of the property, there's opportunities, I think, that the city, um, can benefit from by working collaboratively. And, um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Thank you very much for taking the time and coming in and going through this process. I can tell you, I'm, I'm not happy with the process. I, I believe when you bring something forward, you want, uh, the assurance that what you bring forward adds value, and you're not wasting your time and effort and money. And I understand you did a neighborhood meeting to determine those factors, but living in this city for 21 years, I'm excited for new things, but a car wash is not one of them, because we have way too many. And I feel car washes right now are, are today's athletic facilities. We need members, membership in order to exist, and that's how I see it. I don't see a car wash, I see a membership, and that's what these are. It's, hey, let's see how many people we can get to sign up, car wash. Do people want to wash their car? I'm not down that at all, but I just see so many of them with memberships, and I don't think that's a benefit for, for what I, what I see, the community, and then the future. There's so many more opportunities on that corner that people are just waiting for. Yes, I don't wanna see another, a drive-through, but if it's allowed use, that's something you can do. But then that's what we had our meeting last week with our, uh, developers and landowners is, it might, be nice to come to a point where, when P U Ds are, are decided and granted, that you don't have to go through this process, because those would be your rights to, to do that. And, uh, that's why, looking at sales and use tax, because Commerce City is built on sales and use, or not, we don't look at property tax, that's the county. They have 56 mils. Here in the city, it's 3.3 mils, so not very much. So we look at op, we look at sales and use tax, and this is the sales, this is the sales and use. You're building, a building at a higher cost, which would add to, one time to the city, and plus the services you offer, sales and use. But the choice of, or call, a car wash there, when there could be more, many more other benefits that, that our community, um, are, are needed, we have, we have leakage. Every city has leakage, and every day, when, when a car wash comes in, that means what could go there, someone else is leaving our city to go get those goods and, get goods, goods and services. So, I just wanna educate, educate you, you don't live here, but you have business, you have land here, which is great, but I just wanted to let you know that, those are the things that our citizens desire and, and should have, and support. So, um, that's all I have for now, and seeing no others.
Mayor, before you take the vote, just to remind folks, the motion that is on the floor is a motion to deny.
Yes.
Um, so just to be clear, I believe you have a yes or a no button. A yes would be to approve the motion to deny. Just making sure that's clear for everyone.
All right, thank you. Ready, thank you.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes, to deny.
Thank you.
That vote is six to two, and it passes with the, with our current, current land development code and what was stated by our city attorney.
So just to be clear, the motion was to deny, so the denial passes, the application does not.
Councilmember Kim?
No, I was gonna wait till administrative.
Oh. All right, on to administrative council business. Do any council members have administrative council business items, emergency unforeseen circumstances? Councilmember Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to, uh, put a motion in to request the, uh, donation of $3,000 to the boutique to, uh, assist with, uh, what the, what the owner had mentioned earlier. That's my motion.
Okay. Motion on the floor is to approve $3,000 to the Hope Resource Center?
No. The boutique.
The boutique, Hope, I'm sorry.
At Adam City.
Adam City Boutique. Working at the Hope Resource Center.
No.
Okay, sorry.
The boutique?
The boutique, sorry. At the MC High School. Okay.
At Adam City Middle School.
All right. Okay. So this is a motion for $3,000 to, I'm sorry, the city council to approve $3,000 for Adam City Middle School Boutique. I got a second. Councilmember Ford?
I'm sorry, sir.
All right. Councilmember Kim made the motion, councilmember Ford, second. Any discussion? Councilmember Douglas?
Well, I was just going to second that, but, uh, um, I think this is money well-applied, so, uh, yeah, but somebody else made the second, so, uh, thank you for the opportunity to weigh in.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, ready for the vote?
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes unanimously, eight votes and one excused absence. All right, councilmember Ford?
Yes, um, I have two items, Mayor. Uh, the first, uh, as a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I would like to make a motion, uh, to donate $2,500 as a sponsorship for the Derby and the Derby event.
All right. So you wanna do that now, so to March 17th?
I wanna do it now.
Okay.
So they can know what they have to count on.
All right. Councilmember Dukes?
Second.
Okay. So the motion on the floor is to donate to the
Sponsorship.
A sponsorship for the Derby event for May 3rd?
Yep.
And that's with the Commerce City Chambers?
Chamber of Commerce.
Chamber of Commerce, okay.
$2,500.
$2,500. Council Ford, councilmember Ford made the motion, and councilmember Duke seconded the motion. Any discussion? Okay, we're ready, thank you.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
No.
Thank you. Mayor, were you gonna vote?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes seven yeses and one no.
And then for my second administrative, um, item, been having a problem with, um, the fact that this council passed, uh, an ordinance supporting the ASPCA, not allowing, um, sale of pets, uh, and for the last couple of weeks, I've been going past, um, the flea market, and there's people on the side of the road with dogs in cages selling them, selling cheros, everything else, it's like the flea market is spilling outside of its boundaries, and, uh, when you look at the amount of congestion and traffic that's along in the, in the shoulder of the road, we're gonna have an accident if we don't clean it up. I wanted to bring it to everybody's attention because the puppies' sales issue, I was against that, and I, I voted against it, but I know members of this council voted for it, and if we have people having dogs, puppies sitting in cages along the side of the road, it does not look well for the laws that we have put into place. That's all I've got.
All right. Councilmember Dukes?
Thank you, Mayor. I have one, um, just listening to some testimony tonight around just safety, public safety, um, and knowing that the number of cars that have been stolen, um, across the city, I would like to, uh, make a motion for us to figure out a proactive way to help support our residents. And one of the things that a neighbor in Aurora, our neighbor in city in Aurora is doing this, and I'd love for, um, us to do it as well, is, uh, so I'd like to make a motion to, uh, direct city staff to work with the, the police department, to look at the cost of, um, uh, buying, uh, the steering wheel locks, they used to be called the clubs, um, and so then we'd be able to give them out to our residents. Um, you, you, you seen the steering wheel locks where you got the key, you could lock it up? We did it already, we, we give them out to residents already?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Um, I love to advertise it more than, um, if that's possible, like, is there a way to promote it, or, let me back up real quick, promote it more, 'cause it's not commonly known.
Uh, yes, sir. I, I think we can look at our, um, advertising, marketing, um, of that. I can see what we're also doing, uh, currently with, with giving the club out, um, but I'm also waiting to see what information the chief may have for me, uh, to share.
Okay, um, and then the budget, I'd be interested in the budget in the near future, I don't know if I need a motion on that, but more around promoting that more, have an opportunity for residents to understand it. There's a lot of car thefts, and every time we look at, um, the news or something, we don't talk enough about that preventative nature of that, so I'd love to promote that more.
City manager Rogers, would that take more than an hour time?
Uh, yes, um, but just so that there's some additional information and background, um, we are seeking grant funding to expand that program, uh, so we'll have to see what that current, uh, grant fund request that we'll be submitting for. Um, with that, additionally, we're also looking at putting, uh, tile trackers in cars for people who sign up, once again, so once, when something's stolen, if you use, like, an air tag, let's call it that, it's an air tag, for lack of better words, uh, giving out air tags that then allow that, it's an air tag, for lack of better words, giving out air tags that then allow for PD to then be able to, once reported, track where that air tag is located.
Okay, okay. Well, so no, no, no motion to do it extra duties, I think just overall, love to figure out how to promote it more, as more of a statement.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Noble?
Yes, thank you very much. We recently talked at a study session about enlarging the evaluation committee by one person. I have reviewed the council policies, and our city council committees actually don't have a number of members attached to any of the committees. So I don't think that this should be a problem. Having consistency on the committee would be helpful, so that we don't have to have Groundhog Day every time we have a new meeting. So I would like to, if he's still interested, nominate Councilmember Kim to the evaluation committee.
Counselor Mayor Kim?
I will second that.
Okay. I think he's still interested. All right, thank you. And we need a vote then.
So the motion is to add another member to evaluation committee?
Miss Councilmember Kim.
And you nominate Councilmember Kim?
Correct.
And what's your motion? Councilmember Kim, second, and he accepted?
Correct.
All right. Thank you.
Discussion.
Any discussion? Counselor Member Douglas?
I think that would be a great addition to the committee, so I will be in support.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All right, I think we're ready to vote.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
It passes the eight yeses and one excused absence.
All right, I have more.
Counselor Mayor Pro Tem Noble, go ahead.
Yes. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to attend the, the study session meeting when we discussed 96th Avenue, the sound walls for 96th Avenue. But I have been in conversation with the city manager about a review of truck routes in Commerce City, particularly the east-west truck routes. So I would like to make a motion to agendize a truck route review at a study session as soon as practicable.
Okay, Counselor Mayor Kim?
I'll second that.
Okay, the motion on the floor to agendize a truck route for a study session, correct?
Truck route review.
As soon as practicable.
Mm-hmm.
As soon as practical. Yes. Discussion, Counselor Member Dukes, or Counselor Member Douglas. I'll go in order as they-
Thank you, that was alphabetical, right? So-
Dukes, Douglas, Ford?
Yeah. So that was one of the items that I was asking about at the study session, when we could add more in. So that was one of the two items. And I was told it couldn't be added in until April, but if it can be done sooner, that might be great.
Okay. Counselor Member Dukes?
Just a question for Mayor Pro Tem. Can you kind of, I know you've had a discussion with the city manager. Can you talk more about the intent of the studies, or the understanding of routes? What are, what are you trying to understand?
What are the best truck routes for Commerce City, given residential development?
So this study session, so ninety, looking at the truck route on 96, you're looking to see if we could deter trucks from 96? Is that the question? Is that the conversation?
City Manager Rogers?
Go ahead, please.
Yeah, great question, Counselor Member Dukes. When talking about this with the Mayor Pro Tem, you know, it comes at an apropos time with updating the master transportation plan, which is obviously looking broad brush at transportation policies around traffic movement, traffic calming, additional roadways that will be constructed as the, as the city continues to build out. But as we reframe from the comprehensive plan, does that then refocus and/or bring any new ideas or ideological positioning as to which roadway should be truck routes, east-west, north-south, through or in and around Commerce City? And given that you have probably one of your most major regional backbone network roadways about to begin construction, that obviously will have inference points with residential along major sections of those, does it still make sense to have that as, as a truck route? Now, right, there's positives and negatives to any decision that's made, but it's one to at least have a conversation amongst you all as, as colleagues, that then obviously is transparent and one to be carried for with, with residents when they ask questions about the future transportation network.
Thank you. And City Manager Rogers, would this presentation help us decide about the sound walls as well? Like, we have alternatives to say if we move the trucks there, or recommend changes and then we won't need sound walls? Is that a part of the discussion too?
It, it could. It could be in parallel. They don't, I mean, they're not, you know, they are, they can be mutually exclusive, but they can also have a connection point. So I think it all is very dependent upon how you all would want staff to frame that conversation coming back to you. Truck routes, right, obviously, there's a number of things, you know, primarily, yes, noise is a big one, but it's more along, along the lines of safety, as well as you're, you are going to be increasing the intensity along that roadway, going from a two-lane section to a four-lane section, while you also do not have in the reasonable near future a section of improvement from chambers to Highway 2.
Yeah.
So, right, it's looking at all of those to, are you, is the situation with where we're going to have trucks going to be improved, or is it going to cause different pinch points? And it's just looking at it at that time and point, and seeing what's the best decisions to be made.
Yeah, thank you, City Manager. And last question, is it, is it possible to look at the financial either benefit of, I don't know what it would be yet, but what jumps in my mind is if trucks are not using 96, we don't do sound walls, there's going to be a financial gain for not needing to construct sound walls, for example, or-
Correct.
Is there any, I mean, as you're looking through it, I would love to know, like, what would be the city's positive financially?
I, I think, you know, trucks, so, yes, there's a way to be able to look at a fiscal analysis or a cost-benefit analysis. And you raised probably one of the, the major components of that being the sound walls and what we've identified initially for the cost of doing so. And if you were to shift the trucks, you know, do we gain any benefit from not having to construct those walls? We may, we may not. Once again, trucks are a component of it. Car, we're going to be adding more volume of vehicles, passenger vehicles, that may also still have a heightened noise impact on, on residents, right? So we'll be able to demonstrate some of those trade-offs to our, our best assumptions, as well as some other details and information.
Thank you very much, City Manager Rogers. So among the streets we talked about were 56, 96, 104th, 120th, and E470. Those are in particular the east-west streets. Highway 2 and Highway 85 are not much you can do about that when they're coming all the way from Greeley and so forth. So I appreciate it, and, and it is a cost evaluation as well. So I hope that everyone will choose to vote to include this on an upcoming study session.
Did you have any more items?
I do. Did we vote on this?
Oh, Counselor Mayor Ford?
Thank you. Yeah, we're still in discussion, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. You know, I, I'm not opposed to looking into this. Matter of fact, I think it's a good idea, if we could save the money on the sound walls. I would like a couple other things considered for this study session, though. One of those is how will this affect us concerning the tipping fees? Because I know that's tied to 96th Avenue for the landfill. The other thing, and we get, we get hammered regularly over not having dialogue with other parties that may be involved. Commerce City is home to 72 trucking companies. I think that we need to have some of their input as well, because I don't want to make, take, take something that we have been doing and make something somewhere else worse. When you're talking about east-west, given the fact that the arsenal is where it's at, it, it really ties you to 104th for forcing that east-west truck traffic onto it to get to Tower. And so what are the trade-offs, I think are, are a big piece, and making sure that the, all, all, all parties that will be affected have some knowledge that we're taking this up. That's all I have.
I do have more.
Mayor Pro Tem, would you mind a friendly amendment that Counselor Mayor Ford just added?
What's the amendment?
The amendment is to reach out to partners in the, or partners in the, in the trucking industry, to see how that will impact them.
Oh, sure.
And then also the tipping fees that is associated with truck traffic.
I don't know what the tipping fee is. I'm not familiar with that.
The tipping fee is vehicles that travel to the landfill.
I'm not familiar with it. We haven't discussed it.
Big at 96th Avenue. 96th Avenue, because they're using 96th Avenue, the city generates a tipping fee off of every truck that uses 96th Avenue and goes into the landfill. So I want to see how that will affect us from a financial perspective, but I also want to know the benefit, and, and this would be a big piece of it, is if we were able to change the truck route, impact on 104th? And what the cost savings would be on the sound walls? And improvement for our residents, that counts as well.
Do you accept that friendly amendment?
So let me just say, when I asked for a review, I expected it to be thorough. That's why I said when practicable. But I'm perfectly fine with including the specificity that you're requesting, if you want.
Thank you.
That's, that's perfectly fine.
Thank you.
I hoped that we would include all that information, because otherwise, we're not making a complete decision.
And I just want to add too, that 96 used to go up to Buckley and then south to 88th. So 96 actually was, completion of 96 was completion, so, you know, we added something without really deleting and adding, you know, as far as tip fee and the, the volume. So, yes, I'd be looking forward to see how this, how this shakes out in the study session. Counselor Mayor Ford?
Yeah, Mayor, when, when it comes to us doing away with Buckley along the backside of the refuge around the old Second Creek Raceway, it's because Buckley actually sits, the road sits on the wildlife refuge's property, and we had to do away with that because their intention was to push their fence further out. And that takes Buckley out of play. That's, was the intent of why that happened.
Right. Okay. We'll save that for a discussion in the study session.
Yeah, if we could have that discussion, that would be helpful, because residents in that area have asked. Trucks are using Telluride and 88, this is the cut through now, instead of Buckley, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, okay, a vote, and then I'll-
All right.
Go to my next one.
We'll go to, go ahead and vote. Thank you.
Your vote is open. Councilmember Chacon, how do you vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that passes seven and one no vote and one excused absence.
Thank you. I also, I'm not asking for a motion right now. I do, I do want to raise these issues, though. Private vehicle rentals. Have any other councilmembers encountered this problem? I'm having this problem in Ward 4. One of the things that I've thought about is that in order to do business, you can't use a city street. And so any vehicles would need to be in your driveway when they're not rented. That's one thought. But hopefully, we can do something about it, because one of my constituents has 17 cars next door that are being rented through Toral. Toral, sorry. Also, I wish Jackie Valdez was here, because I would add to the ATV problem. So now we have an ATV problem, in particular in Ward 4 as well. One house has around four ATVs, and a neighbor called me about it on Saturday, because they were pushed off the sidewalk as the ATV was coming down the sidewalk. And then on Sunday, there were people writing about ATVs using Reunion Park. So I think ATVs is probably something that we need to tackle as the entire city. And daycares. So for the sake of the chamber, we have discussed the daycare issue as a city council, but we didn't take any formal action on it. I'm well aware of the number of daycares that are going in around 104th and Chambers are the number that will be there. In addition, I got a call from, or I was contacted by a daycare owner who does it at his home, and he was feeling very discouraged, because he thinks it's become quite hard to fill slots with the children. And when he contacted the state to get numbers, Commerce City was actually showing a reduction in the number of children. So as Councilmember Ford was stating earlier, you can't do much about market forces. If they seem to think that they have potential clients or customers for daycare, then I guess that's what goes in. But perhaps we need to take a deeper dive into this topic as well. So I'm not going to bring up the matter that I raised earlier. Thank you.
Okay, any other council, Council, City Manager Rogers?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to respond to the Mayor Pro Tem's discussion around private vehicle rentals. She's been very active in, in making us aware. Just for some background for you all, we are addressing the matter that's occurring within the neighborhood that's impacting that, that community. But I, I think just for your awareness and understanding under the Land Development Code, you know, we would look at that as a home occupation. A home occupation is where you're allowed to operate an office. But we do not allow for the delivery or the pickup of, and storing of vehicles in association with your business outside of, of two. And I don't have the, the regulation put up on me, so, you know, generally speaking, when you start to get the multiple vehicles that are being parked on streets in, in general in the neighborhood, that flies in the face of what's permitted under our home occupation requirement. So, you know, we do have some existing provisions under our, our Land Development Code in which we are able to enact and move forward, but she does raise a, a point of, you know, looking at this as a vehicle Airbnb, in essence, for, for that. So it is something I know my team in community development is also thinking about from a, from a policy perspective as we continue to address this matter. So I do want to thank her for, for raising that with me.
All right, Counselor Member Douglas?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I've been approached by constituents regarding that issue as well, so I wanted to substantiate the, the problem.
All right, any other councilmembers? Okay, on to reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, sir, yes, sir. Thank you. So March 5th at Eagle Point will be our first community in compliance series, which is to offer resources and insights on property maintenance and expectations. Four meetings will be held throughout the year. Residents should expect to receive information on programs such as Snow Guardians, My C3 Tool Trailer, and Advancing Commerce City Together. Residents are invited to provide feedback on the city's 2025 to 2029 consolidated plan for the use of CDBG funds for Tuesday, on Tuesday, excuse me, March 4th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at Eagle Point Rec Center. And these funds support vital community projects, including housing improvements, public services, neighborhood revitalization, and also benefiting low- to moderate-income residents. Public work, we're having a public open house this- open house this Thursday to talk about the wirespan, excuse me, this Wednesday, to talk about the wirespan traffic signal that will still soon be installed at Chambers Road in East 105th Avenue. Currently, no signal exists at this intersection. Obviously, there's been a number of different pedestrian vehicular, vehicular, vehicular conflicts, and it's been warranted for a traffic signal, given that there's been such a significant community interest. We wanted to be able to touch base and have them understand what, what's forthcoming. You all will be seeing a contract for construction to begin on April 7. So you will also see that on April 7 as, as a resolution. And therefore, after you all take action, I would suspect that week of April 7 will shortly begin construction activities thereafter. It may take us until the, throughout the summer to get it up and running, given that we are expanding, we are spanning a wide area, but construction will begin in, in April or shortly thereafter. CCPD continues to amaze me in finding new ways to try to connect with the community, and we will have one on March 29, which is going to be the first of its kind, which is Spade Today, a low-cost vaccine clinic for dogs and cats. And the idea behind the clinic is to give Commerce City pet owners an affordable alternative to vaccinating their pets. So gotta give a shout out to Animal Control for coming up with, with that one as part of our, our PD team. We're continuing to keep working on the My C3 Day of Service, which is scheduled for Friday, Earth Day, April 18, between 9:00 AM and 1:00 PM. That's working out in the community as, as employees, participating, hopefully with local businesses and others, to, to make a change in our community appearance. And last but not least, because I made a promise, so I want to give a shout out to Mrs. Thompson's sixth-grade class at Kemp Elementary. Thank you very much for inviting me and letting me read to the class today as part of Read Across America. And with that, that ends my report.
Thank you. Any questions for City Manager Rogers? Councilmember Dukes?
What book did you read?
So my child thought it was apropos to grab the book Giraffe Have Problems, given height between both giraffes and myself. So thank you for that, Ruth and Ziva.
Any other council members, questions? All right, thank you. City interns, Ozeki.
Not to be a one-upper, but I did read to the first-grade class at Kemp Elementary School today, and I read, Give a Moose a Muffin. So, there you go.
Then you share a muffin, what'd you say?
Give a Moose a Muffin.
Oh, give a Moose a muffin. All right.
We are starting our series of land use trainings with you all. They begin at the end of next week. I just want to highlight, if any of you have questions that you want specifically answered, or anything that comes to mind between now and the next couple of weeks when you're scheduled to meet, please, by all means, reach out to me, text me, email me. We want to make sure that, you know, you're, we're using this time appropriately and getting all of your questions answered. That is it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any councilmembers have any reports they would like to make at this time? Oh, wait, I do have administrative council business. Forgot. I need to appoint someone in my, my, in my spot, while I, myself and the other councilmembers go to DC. So I'm asking to allow Councilmember Kim to be the mayor while I'm gone, hoping that he doesn't burn anything down or make any rude phone calls.
Mayor, if you, well, Councilmember Kim, if you were to accept, you can, as acting mayor, declare an emergency if you burn something down. So just give me a call. God help us all.
Councilmember Kim, would you like to?
That's fine.
All right. Is the council okay with that? Do we need to take a vote?
Yeah, as long as there's an immediate, like, what's the administrative?
Do you want to make a vote, take a vote for that? Pursuader Lee?
I mean, it can't hurt to make a motion to do that. I, I think in the past, I can't recall what we did at the.
We didn't in the past, but I.
Last meeting.
Is the council okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. That was for the record, though, okay? All right, who, Councilmember Douglas, do you have a report to make?
Yes, but I don't have to be first in line.
For me?
I said, yes, but I don't have to be first in line.
Okay. I just saw your name on there.
Oh, okay.
Any other, any other councilmembers have reports to make? Councilmember Teeter?
Nope.
Councilmember Dukes?
Yes. So I actually was at Kemp as well, and I read, what did I read? Grumpy Monkey. Grumpy Monkey. If you haven't read that yet, that's a good book.
What'd you just say?
Grumpy Monkey.
Okay.
And it's a great book.
Pardon me, sorry.
So, so that was a great day today to be there, and also be a part of the builders' commercial, being part of the, the development community, where we had developers, we had landowners, and we had folks that represent retail and commerce. So it was a great start of the discussion. Look forward to be able to move forward with some of these actions that we talked about. With that, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Kim?
Thank you, Mayor. So I did have an opportunity to go to Kemp Elementary today, read a book called Marker and Lid to some fourth graders. I just want people to know that we do have a, a novelist, a brand-new, here in Commerce City. Her name is Jessie Campagna, Campagna, I guess. Marker and Lid, it basically is a, it's a story about essentially how, how you can basically support one another, and, and it was, it was, it was quite a, quite a deal. I always enjoy reading to nine- and 10-year-olds, even though when my kids are in their twenties. So it's always good there. And then the other thing, too, is on Sunday, I actually attended a Air Force retirement ceremony for Captain Catherine Nay. Captain Nay was a part of the Veterans Commission when it first started. Captain Nay is, she, she joined the Air Force at, at the age of 30 in the National Guard. I bring this up because in her first five years in, actually, five years ago, she was battling breast cancer. Unfortunately, it came back, so she is medically retiring. She's at a stage four this time. She does live in the community. She did state during her retirement ceremony that it was treatable but not curable at this point. So God bless her and her family. She doesn't live far from me at all. I just told her, just, you know, reach out to me if she needs something. I'm always going to be there. So, but Captain Nay was part of the Veterans Commission. I think she's looking at potentially returning back now, since there's not going to be much of anything else she's going to be doing, other than being medically retired at this point. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Douglas?
Thank you. So I was thinking that I didn't have a busy week last week, because I couldn't find my calendar, and I usually refer to that to remember what I had done, but I guess it was much busier than I had thought earlier today. So I attended that Zoom meeting with the, that CML provided, had 500 participants in it, and we were discussing all the, the issues with federal dollars and how they may be applied back. And, and so it was a very good discussion. They were open to a lot of questions, and they actually stayed on longer than the hour that they, they had. So I think they are going to be a good resource for us for knowing how to handle things going forward when it comes to federal dollars. Went to the E-PAC meeting, and then the Developer Roundtable. That was really great. I look forward to many more of those. I think they're very, possibility for being productive is, is fantastic. So looking forward to those. I accompanied a constituent to do an application for the apartments at the 72nd and, and Colorado through Brothers Redevelopment, and very excited about the fact that they're accepting applications, and the first residents will be moving in in June. I went to the Adams 14 DAC District Accountability Meeting, and that was a great meeting and productive, and very excited about how Adam, the school district, is moving forward to electrify. They're getting in 14 electric buses, but they're also working with Xcel Energy, so that they're producing their own energy with a solar facility, and that will provide energy for those buses, as well as also elementary. And they've been working with Xcel as far as the transmission of electricity and everything. So Adams 14, they are doing phenomenal things. I also met with Sapp Brothers manager and a member of the community well-being team, because Denver has the hotels on our border that house the homeless, and they're seeing a lot of issues with, with the homeless coming in over there. So we're going to try to work on some solutions, so that we can alleviate some of the, the issues that go along with that. And then I also, while submitting something on the access site for a constituent, realized that the ACT program is up and running, and I've got people who have already put in applications for assistance with that, and that's the Advancing Commerce Study Together program. And I really want to thank the staff for everything that they've been doing for the community, with the community well-being, being over on the fifth floor of, of 72nd and Colorado, and the ACT program and everything that's offered there. Thank you so much.
Any other councilmembers? Last call? All right, thank you. Let's see, Tuesday 25th, am I interviewed with our facilitator for a retreat. Later on in the evening, myself and Councilmember Teeter attended I-70 corridor improvement study. This is stakeholders workshop number 11. We come to find out that CDOT owns the right-of-way along Sand Creek, where we have those wooden walls and structures. So over the years, the city has been paying to help clean that up, when that really is CDOT's responsibility. It was revealed on last Tuesday. And so Renee Bullock was there as well in this stakeholders workshop meeting. And he joked around and said, well, if I had known that, we would have seek reimbursement for all the time and money we put in. So I thought it was interesting that CDOT is responsible. That is in their, their growth boundary, as far as responsibility. And let's see, Thursday, the Anna meeting, we had a, our annual, I would say, it was kind of like a retreat, kind of go over what have they accomplished over the years and what they haven't accomplished, and a lot of discussion with the fact that CDOT controls those managed lanes down I-25. And so the way it works, the policy is, if there's any proceeds that come off after paying the, the bonds, the money would go back towards operation and maintenance into Exco Fund. So when it's needed for any, any improvements along that corridor, that those managed lanes has that effect. So we asked that if, with CDOT, if there is a managed lane on 270, we can also consider doing the same as tolls are collected, and there needs to be improvements within a corridor, that those tolls, with those proceeds would help with future operation and maintenance, as the bond's being paid off. In the end, when the bond's being paid off, that money goes towards any kind of improvement as the road is, continues, continues on. And then between that meeting, did a Zoom call on my way down to E470 meeting, and I just listened in for the Colorado Local Government Federal Funding Freeze and Executive Order update. I thought that was very interesting. Had our meeting with E470, and then later in the evening, we had our council and developers meeting, which I thought was well-attended, and hope that we could maybe talk about, maybe some, some best practices going forward. What we could see with PUDs, as we just had a hearing tonight, maybe it could be a better process, so we don't have those items come before us, feeling that pressure, we have to do something for an applicant. Instead, removing the applicant off the zoning request in PUD, and making it more streamlined, streamlined approach, including, including our citizens. That way, we, everybody knows what's, what's acceptable and what's not. It may, it may, it may not work, but just putting it out there. We, most of us are traveling out to DC, want to make sure everyone is packed and ready. There's a lot of discussion ahead of us. Be prepared to ask those candid conversations with our representatives, because there's a lot, a lot at stake, and a lot of people are, are depending on this administration, if they're, they're, they are in control of, of the boat and which way it turns. And we need to make sure they stay on course. Don't forget about the people who actually pay taxes, and those who, we, we rely on a, on a daily basis. Those include undocumented immigrants that have contribute here in Colorado. They are part of the community, and want to make sure there is a, a path for them as well. So safe travels for everybody, and, and to our staff as well. Thank you. All right, if, if there's no more, it's 9:45, we're adjourned.